Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am pleased to report that we have a quorum. There are 292 town meeting members, so the number required for a quorum is 147. Our town clerk, Sarah Haskell Aruda, has informed me that we have 154 members present at 9:06 a.m. This meeting will come to order. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Thank you very much. Would you please remain standing for a moment. At this time, let us bow our heads in a moment of silence to honor the memories of our friends who have passed away since our last meeting. This morning, we honor the memory of former town meeting members, former board members and committee members, and all those who have served the town. Thank you very much. You may be seated now. So, good morning, and thank you all for being here to serve as the legislative body for our town today. We're going to have a great day today, and we're going to get a lot accomplished. Let me remind you that there is no smoking in the school or on school grounds. And if you haven't done so already, could you please turn your cellphones off or put them on vibrate? If you need to make a call, please leave the room to do that. Okay, let's talk about our plan for today. We have 35 articles on our annual town meeting warrant, plus three articles on the special town meeting warrant, for a total of 38 articles. While we may have some healthy debate today, I also expect that we are going to be finished today. For planning purposes, we'll plan to take a one-hour break for lunch around noon time, unless we're really close to getting this warrant done. I will skip Article 13, and I will either take it up immediately -- so Article 13 is the budget, okay? I will skip Article 13, and I will take it up immediately following lunch, or as the last article of the day if we don't take a lunch break. Prior to Article 28, the Charter Review Committee will be showing a short presentation that will give you an overview of Articles 28 through 35. After that presentation, we'll be taking the articles one at a time for discussion and voting. And finally, for Article 12, you will see me hand the gavel over to our Town Council Attorney Savastano to provide over the meeting for this article. This article includes a vote on the salary of the town clerk. The town clerk is my sister, and to avoid any perception of impropriety, I am going to step aside for this article. Okay? Also, all appropriations voted during the annual town meeting today are from the levy, unless you read or hear otherwise. Okay, so, I am going to read the title of each article in the warrant. I'm then going to recognize the sponsor. The sponsor will summarize the article before us. I'm going to look for a motion and a second from a town meeting member, and then the Finance Committee and the Select Board will be recognized to give their recommendation. After that, I'm going to open the floor for discussion. If you wish to speak, please raise your card. It's easier for me to see you. It's a little bit dark in here with the lights coming at us on the stage. The team up here will also help me see you. I will recognize people who have not spoken yet today, and then those who have not spoken on the article being debated. Please wait for the microphone. Please stand up if you're able. Give your name and precinct number every time you speak. You may ask one question, and then hand the mic back to the people who are going to be bringing the microphones to you, and I will recognize you if you have follow-up questions. All questions are posed to me as the chair. There's no one-on-one debate allowed, and there's no cross-examining of town officials or other town meeting members. I'm going to make my best effort to get answers to your questions. Our goal today is to get you information and to use that information so that we can make good decisions on behalf of the town. Only persons recognized by the moderator may speak. You may not yield your time to another speaker. We have no speaking limits, but I would ask that you be brief and not repetitious. If someone has already made a point you wish to make, consider if you truly need to make it again. As the legislative body for our community, the expectation is that everyone present today will act with the decorum befitting this body and treat everyone present with respect. We do not attack other people or question their integrity. We are here to discuss issues and not other people. We refer to issues, positions, and points of view, and avoid using names. We're here to do the town's business, and there may be different opinions is the best way to get that business accomplished. Let's respect the differences. If you have heard enough debate today on an article that's before you, you may raise your hand to be recognized and say, "I call the question," or "I move the question." If two-thirds of the other members of this body agree with you, that's required for passage. If it passes, we will stop debate, and the question before town meeting will be put to a vote. If you wish to make an amendment to the main motion today, it must be in writing, and it must be legible. If I can't read it, I can't take it. Town meeting members, if you are a town meeting member, please sit on this side of the aisle, these front rows here. If you are not in these seats, your vote will not be counted. If you are not a town meeting member, you're welcome to be here, but please sit in the back sections. Votes will be by a show of hand. I will let you know when more than a majority is needed to pass an article. If you think I've made a mistake in calling the vote, stand immediately. If seven people challenge me, then we will do a teller count. A teller count cannot be challenged. When I call the next article, you can no longer challenge the vote. Assisting us today are the following individuals from DCTV: Peter Chase, Michael Menez, Daniel Maderas, Chad Amaral, Daniel Ferguson, Jess Gove, Todd Migliacci, John Silva. Additionally, I have appointed, and the town clerk has sworn in, Daniel Ferguson, Jess Gove, Todd Migliacci, and John Silva to serve as tellers for the duration of the meeting. DCTV is again covering this meeting live. And a special thanks to DCTV, because they do a great job of providing information for us on the screen and making this run smoothly and easily and broadcasting it. So, thank you, DCTV. Those are our ground rules for today. So what I want to do next is introduce you to the people sitting up on stage. First, the person sitting next to me is our Town Council, Anthony Savastano; then our town clerk, Sarah Haskell Aruda; our Assistant Town Administrator, Chris Vitale; our Director of Budget and Finance, Gary Carrero; and our Town Administrator, Sean McGinnis. This, as most of you know, will be Mr. McGinnis's last town meeting as our Town Administrator. On behalf of the town meeting, please accept our thanks for your service, Mr. McGinnis, and best wishes to you on your new endeavor. Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. I also want to highlight that Mr. Vitale, our Assistant Town Administrator, and Mr. Carrero, our Director of Budget and Finance, will be serving as our interim co-town administrators after Mr. McGinnis has left this role. Next, we have our Select Board, and I would like our Select Board Chair to please introduce the members of the Select Board.
Good morning, everybody. To my far left is David Tattelbaum; to my immediate left, Stan Mickelson; to my far right, Heidi Silva-Rooks; and our newest member, Christopher O'Neill; and I'm Sean McDonald. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Finally, we have nine volunteers who serve on the Finance Committee and act as advisors to town meeting. They spend countless hours reviewing budgets and reviewing the articles that are before you today. I'm going to turn it over to their chairperson to introduce the Finance Committee, please. Mr. Garvin.
Thank you, madam. To my left is Carrie Parsons. Next to her is William Bowles. To my right is Janine Simmons. Next to her is Phil Lenz. Next to him is John Souzer, and at the end is Teresa Hamm, and my name is Robert Garvin. And I'd just like to thank Sean McGinnis and Gary Carrero for their help and patience helping us get through this process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we begin, we need to take care of a couple of preliminary motions. For those, I will turn it over to Mr. Savastano, our Town Council.
Move that the meeting note the correct call of the warrant in the lawful posting in return of service thereon, and that the moderator is hereby relieved from reading each article in its entirety and is allowed to refer to them by title and number, and that any motion to amend Schedule A by increasing a line item must include a reduction of the same amount from another line item, and that the moderator is hereby allowed to take up action on any of the several articles out of numerical sequence as she may determine, and finally, that a teller count need not be taken on motions requiring two-thirds, four-fifths, or nine-tenths votes, and the moderator may declare whether the motion passes or fails.
Do I have a motion? Thank you. And a second. All in favor of the preliminary motions, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The preliminary motions pass at 9:16. Okay, everyone, here we go. Article 1, Community Preservation Committee Administrative Budget. Can we have our Assistant Chair? Yep, thank you.
Good morning. James Conlon, Community Preservation Committee. This is a housekeeping article. The Community Preservation Act allows up to 5% of the expected annual revenue to be set aside for Community Preservation Committee Administrative Budget. At the end of the fiscal year, any unused administrative funds are incorporated into the CPA unrestricted reserve to be used for future project awards. The CPC recommends an administrative budget of $35,000, which is estimated at 3.4% of anticipated FY25 revenue. A breakdown of the CPC administrative budget is included in the town meeting packet. Move that the town meeting approve this article.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee Recommended 7-0-0.
Select Board Recommendation.
Select Board Recommends 5-0.
Any debate on Article 1? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 1, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 1 passes at 9:17. Article 2, Community Preservation Committee, FY25, Community Housing and Historic Preservation.
This is a housekeeping article. The Community Preservation Act requires that at least 10% of projected annual revenues be either committed to a project or set aside in reserve for each of the three CPA-eligible uses: open space preservation, historic preservation, affordable housing. The CPC typically meets this requirement by transferring to reserves, the 10% minimum requirement, at the June town meeting. Subsequent project commitments are made from the available reserves to the greatest extent possible, thereby maximizing the amount of funds in the unrestricted reserve which is available to fund projects for any of the three eligible uses. Move that town meeting approve this article.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation, please.
Finance Committee Recommends 7-0-0.
And Select Board Recommendation.
Select Board Recommends 5-0.
Any discussion on Article 2? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 2, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 2 passes at 9:18. Article 3, Dias Landing Dinghy Storage Improvements. Mr. Conlon.
This is a recreation project that is eligible for CPA funding. The CPC is recommending funding to the town of Dartmouth Harbor Master in the amount of $9,000. The funds will be used to improve storage facilities for dinghies, kayaks, and paddleboards at the Dias Landing. Existing storage racks will be either improved or replaced with more durable and efficient storage. The CPA funds represent a local match for a Seaport Economic Council grant application for an additional $41,000. Move that the town meeting approve this article.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee Recommends 7-0-0.
Thank you. Select Board Recommendation, please.
Select Board Recommends 5-0.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 3? Yes, in the back. Can we get a microphone here, please?
Hi, Jim Costa, Precinct 4. Just, who's kayaks, dinghies, and other things that are going to be stored there?
Great question. Great question. Mr. Conlon.
I'll have to ask the harbor master to answer that question.
Sure. Mr. Melo is going to come on down and help us with that.
Good morning. Steve Melo, harbor master. Direct question, as the public is using those kayaks dinghies, majority of which are town residents, they're allowed to store them for a fee in the rack, so they don't have to be transported by truck or trailer, cutting down the amount of parking that's needed and making use simplified by quick-launching and accessing the waterway.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 3? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 3, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 3 passes at 9:21. Article 4, Harbor Dredging Design and Permitting. Mr. Conlon.
This is a recreation project that is eligible for CPA funding. The CPC is recommending funding to the town of Dartmouth in the amount of $10,000. The feasibility study will survey the channel leading to the Peyton Arum Bridge, as well as near the Dias Landing, to determine current and potential depth after dredging. Services include the development of a dredging plan for the town that includes a project schedule and preliminary budget estimate. The CPA funds represent the local match for a previously awarded Seaport Economic Council grant for an additional $40,000. Move that the town meeting approve this article.
Thank you for the second. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee Recommends 7-0-0.
Thank you. Select Board Recommendation.
Select Board Recommends 5-0.
Any discussion on Article 4? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 4, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 4 passes at 9:22. Article 5, Uponagansett Park and Dias Landing Master Plan. Mr. Conlon.
This is a recreation project that is eligible for CPA funding. The CPC is recommending funding to the town of Dartmouth in the amount of $15,000. The recommended funds will be used to fund consultation services to develop a comprehensive plan for the Uponagansett Park Dias Landing site. The Uponagansett Park Dias Landing site includes a wide range of recreational facilities and activities. The plan would provide guidance to the town on needed improvements and future development opportunities to enhance recreational uses and facilities, as well as support a comprehensive and integrated use of the site. The requested CPA funds represent the local match for a previously awarded Seaport Economic Council grant in the amount of $60,000. Move that town meeting approve this article.
Thank you. I have a second. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee Recommends 7-0-0.
Thank you. Select Board Recommendation.
Select Board Recommends 5-0.
Any discussion on Article 5? Gentlemen in the back, please.
James Costa, Precinct 4. Everybody's been down there knows that there's parking problems, so when the new plan will be including parking spaces or parking lot?
I'd like to ask Chris Vitale to answer that question.
Sure. Mr. Vitale.
Good morning. There we go. Good morning, Chris Vitale, Assistant Town Administrator. Yes, they will look at parking on both those sites.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Right on the aisle here, please.
Joan Menard, Precinct 9. I recall hearing that there was some grant funding coming in on one of the CPC articles that was supposed to arrive on June 1st. I'm sorry, I don't remember which article it was, and so I was just going to ask if it was this article or the next one?
So, there is grant funding that we have already received in support of this project, yes?
Supposed to actually execute on one of the projects, not just do the planning?
So, this is not a construction activity? This would be a planning project, so this will help guide future construction projects at the site.
I'm not sure which article I'm talking about, so it makes it hard, but it was money that was supposed to come in June 1st.
So, do you have a question about the money that -- are you asking if we received it?
I'm asking if we received it, but I'm also asking which article it corresponds to.
I'm not sure, but as we go along, if it comes up, I will make sure to highlight. Mr. McGinnis seems like he knows.
I think you might be referring to the article for the Passagansett River land purchase. That's coming up later in the warrant. But that funding is due in June.
Okay. Any further questions related to Article 5? The gentleman right here, please.
Robert Brown, Precinct 9. Will the study involve sea level rise and that impact on our plans?
Good question, Mr. Vitale.
So, yes, it will. Right now, the town is also working on a municipal vulnerability plan, and there are findings that we plan to incorporate from the current study into that master plan document that will address sea level rise at the park and the landing.
Anything else on Article 5? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 5, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 5 passes at 9:26. Article 6.
This is --
Dartmouth, one second. Dartmouth Housing Production Plan. Mr. Conlon.
This is a housing project that is eligible for CPA funding. The CPC is recommending funding to the town of Dartmouth in the amount of $25,000. The recommended CPA funds will be used to update the Dartmouth Five-Year Housing Production Plan. The current housing production plan expired in February 2024. The housing production plan is a proactive strategy for meeting a town's housing needs. This CPA request would fund the cost of consultation services to update the town's housing production plan to meet the requirements of Chapter 40B. The town is seeking an additional technical assistance grant from the Southeast Regional Planning and Economic Development District in the amount of $19,690 that will provide for additional community input and analysis for the production plan. The town meeting approve this article.
Thank you. And I have a second. Finance Committee Recommendation, please.
Finance Committee Recommends 7-0-0.
Thank you. And the Select Board Recommendation, please.
Select Board Recommends 5-0.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 6? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 6, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 6 passes at 9:28. Article 7, Cornell Pond Trail Development. Mr. Conlon.
This is a recreation project that is eligible for CPA funding. The CPC is recommending funding to the town of Dartmouth in the amount of $24,000. CPA funds will be used for design and permitting services for an ADA-accessible trail that will connect the Cornell Pond parking lot to the adjacent Howland Reserve property line. The trail is estimated to be about 600 feet and will include footbridges over the Cornell Pond's dam spillways. This trail will expand access to the Cornell Pond Recreation Area and provide access for persons who use wheelchairs or have mobility impairments that make traversing uneven surfaces difficult. The town is seeking an additional $96,000 through the Mass Trails Program. The Community Preservation Act funds will serve as required matching funds for the town's Mass Trails grant application. Move that the town meeting approve this article.
And I have a second. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee Recommends 7-0-0.
And Select Board Recommendation. And Select Board Recommendation?
Select Board gladly recommends this five zero.
Any discussion on Article Seven? Question down here, please. Nope, right here. I'm sorry, right here, and if you want to be recognized, I will recognize you in one moment, please. The gentleman on the aisle, right here.
Peter Holland, Precinct One. So I guess my question to this is, we're going to make the entrance to the trail ADA accessible, but is the rest of the trail usable with ADA?
So this would look at the whole trail, so it'll include the foot bridges and the trail all the way up to the property line to the Howland Reserve?
I guess my... Another question I have is, do we know the total length of that trail?
About 600 feet is what they told us.
600 linear feet?
But does that get you to... Is that the entrance? Or is that the whole trail, considering the bridges that are already existing on the marshes and kind of all of that?
That would include from where the parking is currently at Cornell Ponds all the way, including the foot bridges, to the town property line?
So that's significantly more than 600 feet?
That's 600 feet.
So are you... So is there... Is the confusion related to the fact that it abuts the Howland Reserve, which is owned by DNRT, perhaps? And it connects to a trail there, is that my understanding?
I'm just wondering, kind of, what's the... So the 600 feet is an entrance to the trail? Is the... How do... Are we only making it handicap accessible for 600 feet?
So I think my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is the full length of the trail is 600 feet, that this money would go towards making that handicap accessible. The 600 feet, I believe, includes some bridges and passages over water. It goes from... It's across the town's property, but not onto the DNRT property of the Howland Reserve, is my understanding. Is that...
Okay.
Okay? I'm sorry, did you have a question, ma'am, on the aisle there? Could you... Thank you.
Andrea Langhauser, Precinct Seven. If we don't receive the Mass Trails Grant, what happens to this money?
Good question.
If a project is not completed, eventually the CPC will act to close out the project, and the money will return to the fund that it came from.
Great. Any further questions on Article Seven? Are we ready to vote? Oh, I'm sorry.
Chris Fay, Precinct Nine. Expanding on the gentleman's question earlier, I think what clarity is needed, as if DNRT has an intent to further enhance their trail past the town's property line for ADA accessibility. And I mean, I think that resonates with folks wanting to understand what the return on this investment is. And if it's for 600 feet, and it's... And you're not at... I'm unfamiliar with that trail. Are you at a place where there's a view shed of the pond, and the intent is to limit ADA accessibility? It wouldn't extend beyond that point, and I think that's important context to understand this investment.
Yep, let me see if I can get you an answer, but we need to be clear that Dartmouth Natural Resources Trust is a not-for-profit organization that's not part of the town. So I don't know if we have any information about that, but let me turn it over to Mr. Vitale, see if he has, he knows more.
Sorry about that. The scope of this project is specifically on the town property. We have not had the conversation about DNRT possibly extending their trail. With that being said, currently, we have had instances where people will cross the spillway, as it stands now, to access this area of the town property and make their way to the DNRT property. You know, the scope of this project is just to make our part of that a little bit safer for them, and also expand it. You know, there are really good views of the pond, and people do make their way over there as it currently stands, but again, our goal is to make it safer.
Okay. And just to clarify, there are views of the pond up to the town property line, because again, making a trail ADA accessible is extremely challenging, right? You're in a forest-type setting, you have roots that are heaving through trails and things like that, so that becomes an ADA impediment. And I think, you know, just understanding that context a little bit more to make this investment, are you getting that return on that investment to meet, you know, the folks that have ADA needs?
The town believes it is now. When we bring on a consultant, you know, we will, you know, look for their recommendation in terms of how to traverse the terrain, you know, to make sure that obviously, if there's a recommended path that is most cost-effective and obviously provides the greatest benefit to our residents, we will look to do that.
Need to beat this to death, but...
All the questions are coming through me, and you've got the mic for a long time, so you can ask a question, I'm happy to give it back, but go ahead.
Last question. It's just that, has there been any early planning on this? Or is this just a nice-to-have with a potential for it to go nowhere beyond that 600 feet? And I think...
Once again, I think that he can't... What I think I heard him say is, we cannot commit Dartmouth Natural Resources Trust. I think we, you know, if people want to reach out and donate to DNRT to help facilitate that, or, you know, volunteer, I suspect that DNRT, you know, would be open to entertaining that, but they're not a town. We can commit to the town. So what he's telling you is this going across town property? Do you have anything else that you wanted to add to that?
Just that we do have a Cornell Pond Advisory Committee. They've been working over the last several years to make multiple improvements, to open up access and increase recreational use of the site. I see Gloria in the front row, who probably has a comment on this to talk a little bit about their initiatives they're doing over there. Yeah.
I'll recognize you next. In the front, yes?
Hi, Gloria Bancroft, Precinct One. The Cornell Pond Advisory Committee was appointed by the Select Board back in 2015. The past several years, we've been working on enhancements to the recreational use of the park. There are three spillways, so by opening up this particular trail, although it's 600 feet, it would provide incredible views of the pond for all people. And as far as DNRT is concerned, they have been in contact with us prior to Chris coming to the town of Dartmouth. I know that Sean can also speak to this. They have been at meetings with us, and most recently, I received a phone call because they would have loved to support the Mass Trails Grant application. Had they, you know, we kind of forgot to contact them, to be honest with you, but they would have been happy to support this. Now whether or not they're going to continue the accessibility portion of it, that's to be determined by them, but even if it ends at the third spillway, that it would be a great accomplishment for someone to be able to go out into nature.
Mr. McDonald, did you have something you want to add?
Sean McDonald, Chairman, Select Board. The Select Board is committed to working with DNRT. DNRT has been a good partner with Dartmouth, and we will continue to work with DNRT and push DNRT to continue the accessibility on their property with this.
Thank you. Do we have any follow-up questions on this? Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Souza?
John Souza. As a member of the Finance Committee and a town resident, I support this article 100%. Even though, I'm... As a resident, I'm not aware of any town-owned property or DNRT property in the town of Dartmouth has any trail that's handicap accessible that I'm aware of. And although this may only be 600 feet, the volunteers, I think, have done a tremendous job, and this is a start. If we can get 600 feet built and used by people with mobility issues, it's a start. And hopefully DNRT recognizes that, and they'll continue it on other properties, and the town recognizes that there's a need for this. So I think this is a great start, and I hope town meeting supports it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Any further on Article Seven? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Seven passes at nine thirty-nine. Article Eight, Appropriation from the Cemetery Sale of Lot Funds. Mr. Carrero?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article Eight is the annual appropriation of the Cemetery Sale of Lot Fund in the amount of $2,000 in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 144, Sections 15 and 25.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Thank you. And a second? Second, thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation, please?
Finance Committee recommends seven zero zero.
Thank you. Select Board Recommendation, please?
Select Board recommends five zero.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Eight? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Eight, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Eight passes at nine forty. Article Nine, Established... Yeah, let me try again. Established Fiscal Year 2025 Maximum Spending Budget for Revolving Fund. Mr. Carrero?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article Nine establishes the FY '25 maximum spending budget for the revolving funds pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, and Subsections 37 through 6. The Cemetery Revolving Fund, $4,500. Recreation and Park Revolving Fund, $250,000. And Library Revolving Fund, $3,500.
And Mr. McDonald, you're moving this for us? And a second? Thank you. And Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends seven zero zero.
Select Board Recommendation?
Select Board recommends five zero.
Any discussion on Article Nine? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article Nine, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article Nine passes at nine forty-one. Article Ten, Acceptance of Capital Planning Committee Report and Funding for Fiscal Year 2025. Mr. Carrero?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article Ten funds the annual CPC the Capital Planning Committee requests. Capital Planning Committee, after a discussion with the various town departments, develops this prioritized list of capital items and projects. Article Ten includes the items that the Capital Planning Committee has voted on and is now being recommended to be funded from various funding sources.
Okay, and do I have a motion on Article Ten?
No moves.
And a second? Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends eight zero zero.
And Select Board Recommendation?
Select Board recommends five zero.
Okay, before we just start discussion, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the totals. If you have a question on any of these subsections, call out a hold, and we'll go back for discussion on that, okay? Dartmouth Public Schools, $615,000. DPW Administration Division, $185,000. Hold on that. DPW Highway Division, $633,250. Water Enterprise, $250,000. Sewer Enterprise, $300,000. DPW Solid Waste Enterprise, $286,000. Waterways Management Enterprise, $34,850. So we have a hold on DPW Administration Division. Who called that hold, please? Could I please have a microphone down here?
Arthur Gerard, Precinct Two. I see that we had a design. Six months ago, I addressed my concerns in Precinct Two about Cross Road, and they said they would come up with a design. I still not see any money for a design for Cross Road, and I would like to get an update on the Cross Road, because it's terrible. Do we have anybody here that can answer that?
So let me see if I can get someone to talk about when... What the status is on Cross Road. It's loosely related to this, but loosely. Mr. Barber?
Good morning. Tim Barber, Director of Public Works. To answer your question, we have a consultant that's working on the design of Cross Road, and it has been submitted to the state on the Transportation Improvement Plan for them to take over the construction once the design is completed. So the design is going through the review process with the state currently.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. I have... I don't... Does anyone else have a hold there? Are we ready to vote on Article Ten? I'm sorry. One second, I need you to get a microphone so we can all hear you, and it can be your own...
Kathleen Ventres, Precinct Four. I just had a question about the design plan, and is that something that is going to consider the issue of climate change? And will that impact private owners' properties?
Sure, let me see if Mr. Barber can answer that for us.
So the design plan for Cross Road...
No, I think she means Smithneck. Smithneck Road Design Plan, which is one of the items listed here.
Oh, Smithneck Road? I'm sorry. So Smithneck Road, yes. So the funding will allow us to go out and hire a consultant to begin the design, including, you know, sea level rise and climate change and resiliency for that corridor of Smithneck Road?
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Any other questions relating... The gentleman here, please?
Dan Turner, District Nine, Precinct Nine. In regard to the wastewater pollution control facility, the wastewater treatment system upgrade evaluation, I'd like to gain some clarity as far as how that's going to be accomplished? And what are they going to be looking at? Is it going to be for total nitrogen removal?
One moment, please, let's see if we can get you some answers.
Yes, so the evaluation for the wastewater treatment facility upgrade is to evaluate the entire facility, as it's over 30 years old, and a lot of the mechanicals are starting to... Have been failing for a few years. We currently have an interim aeration upgrade project that is currently around 40% design, where it takes... We're using grant funds from the state as well, and from Buzz's Bay Coalition to reduce nitrogen out into the bay.
Thank you. So you would contemplate that the new system would be designed to also reduce nitrogen, would be in nitrogen up to whatever is feasible based on current technology?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Do you have a follow-up question, Mr. Turner? Okay.
Well, a design based on increasing the aeration capacity of the plant is not going to add to total nitrogen removal, because you need to actually implement anoxic zones as well? Is that included?
Yes, it is. It's... So as part of our interim upgrade with the aeration facility, we had applied for a separate grant to include nitrogen reduction, and that was awarded last year to be part of that interim project. And then the entire facility upgrade will also include nitrogen reduction as well.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Any other questions related to Article Ten before we move on? On the aisle?
Joan Menard, Precinct Nine. What will the balance be in the surplus revenue once this 1.4 or so comes out?
Mr. Carrero, was that for you? One moment, please, we're going to try and get that for you.
The balance will be $259,285.11. $285,000. Excuse me, $259,285.11.
Thank you. Any further questions on Article Ten? We got this gentleman right here, who hasn't spoken yet today.
Just, Win Willard, Precinct Nine. I just wondered if I could ask the DPW Director what the plan for Smithneck Road is in the meantime? How to cope with the deterioration there?
We're working with the Conservation Commission and our DPW Highway Division to secure and support the roadway currently from erosion with our repairs and some boulders or rocks to prevent washout in the interim.
Thank you. And the gentleman here, I believe, had a question?
Chris Fay, Precinct Nine. Have there been any discussions about allocating monies to best management practices or anything of the sort to look at point source of nitrogen outside of wastewater? As many folks know, the town was really put into a corner with other South Coast communities over the last couple of years by Mass DEP... over the last couple of years by Mass DEP with respect to some very drastic measures that they were looking to impose on septic owners, and that process is playing out on Cape. We've received what I would call a stay of execution. You know, when this discussion was hot and heavy, there was a lot of momentum as to how the town could posture itself for the future and plan for the inevitable that DEP is going to put some kind of mandate on us. What has the town done in the last several months to begin to position us from a forward-thinking perspective and being proactive so that we can demonstrate to DEP that we're leaning into this solution or this problem with solutions that are going to bear fruit?
So while the question that you have is a really good question, it, I'm going to ask Mr. Barber to talk about it within, with regard to what we have on the warrant before us. You're raising really valuable issues. It's just, we're starting to really edge outside the scope of this warrant article, and so there may be another place in town for your concerns to be heard. It might be at Select Board, or maybe with DPW in a different forum. I hear you, and let's have him talk about this maybe with regard to the, to the water treatment upgrade, the wastewater treatment upgrade, okay? It's just, I hear your question. They're valid questions, but we're starting to, when you're asking a really broad question that I think is beyond the scope of this article, okay? So, Mr. Barber, can you talk about some of that as it relates to what the plans are?
Sure. Yeah, so the evaluation of the wastewater treatment facility is also going to evaluate using population growth proposals, working with SERPED, to add capacity to the treatment facility to allow for future extensions and additional services throughout town to add sewer services and reduce the amount of septic systems. Other than that, we work with our, through our MS4 permit with consultants in best management practices to increase treatment of stormwater that's discharging out to the bay.
Thank you. Any further questions related to Article 10 specifically? One on the aisle there, please.
Madam Moderator, Andrea Langhauser, Precinct 7. Thank you for letting us expand into the scope of this article. I have a question for DPW. Can he give us a little more information about the PFAS evaluation of the water supply, whether or not there's been any PFAS found, and what the extent of the evaluation will be?
Mr. Barber.
So there, we do have some PFAS in some of our wells, but the levels are pretty low, and we're working with a consultant to evaluate, currently to evaluate all of our wells and treatment facilities for future treatment if needed.
Okay. On this warrant article, is there anything else? Mr. Dabney.
Fred Dabney, Precinct 5. There seems to be a lot of studies and consultings working to advise us on future issues, and we know that these potential expansions are going to cost us an enormous amount of money, and I was wondering if there was any timeline on when the DPW would receive the results of these various studies.
Any study in particular?
Well, I mean, we are, we are running a little bit abroad here, right? So wastewater treatment, like something related to my article here, so I feel like we're not running amok.
Well, pick one you want. Wastewater treatment.
Wastewater treatment. We're looking for funding currently at town meeting through our capital plan so we can reach out and get, receive proposals, or request for proposals from consultants to start the evaluation towards the design of a new facility. So that's probably going to take a couple of years for design, and we're looking at probably, you know, at, you know, best 2029 construction if everything goes through as planned.
Okay. So we're going to stick to Article 10. I know you guys have a lot of really good questions. This is beyond the scope of our town meeting. We're starting to go way beyond the scope of our town meeting. There are DPW meetings and Select Board meetings, and they're all valid questions, but that is a better forum for them. So anything strictly related to Article 10? Okay. Are we ready to vote? Thank you. All in favor of Article 10, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 10 passes at 9:55. Article 11. Appropriation for Collective Bargaining Agreements. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, thank you. This would appropriate a total of $960,000 from the Collective Bargaining Stabilization Fund and the tax levy for the purpose of providing retro payments for FY23 and FY24 for the Police Brotherhood Union for settlement of the contract.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 500.
And Select Board Recommendation.
Select Board recommends 500.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 11? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 11, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 11 passes at 9:56. Article 12, Salaries and Statement of Elected Officials. I am turning the gavel over to Mr. Savistano. Thank you.
Article 12, Salaries and Statements of Elected Officials. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, this is an annual article that establishes the salaries for elected officials, which is zero, and it also establishes the salary for the town clerk for FY25, which would be 102,685.
Do we have a second? Any discussion on the article?
FinCom.
Sorry, recommendations from the FinCom?
FinCom recommends 800.
And the Select Board?
Select Board recommends 500.
Any discussion on the article? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes at 9:57.
Okay, as we discussed earlier, we're going to skip over Article 13 for right now. So let's go to Article 14, please. So Article 14 is on page nine of your warrant packet you're, okay? So Article 14, Funding Sewer and Septic Betterments. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 14 funds the annual sewer and septic betterments. FY25 appropriation request is in the amount of $1,151.73 from sewer betterment revenue and $32,618 to cover the FY25 debt service and associated fees on title 5 septic system loans administered by the Board of Health.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Do I have a second? Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 800.
And the Select Board Recommendation.
Select Board recommends 500.
Any discussion on Article 14? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 14, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 14 passes at 9:58. Article 15, Funding Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 15 funds the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 1/2. The FY25 recommended budget is $1,986.80.
Thank you. And I have a motion? Thank you. And a second. Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 700.
And Select Board?
Select Board recommends 500.
Any discussion on Article 15? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 15, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 15 passes at 9:59. Article 16, Funding Water Department Enterprise Fund. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 16 funds the Water Department Enterprise Fund pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F and 1/2. The FY25 recommended budget is $6,179,325.
Thank you. And I have a motion and a second? We're going to start the special in a moment. Do I have a second? Thank you. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends 700.
And Select Board?
Select Board recommends 500.
Okay. Any discussion on Article 16? The gentleman right here, please.
This is just a financial detail. Can someone explain solar net metering credits?
Sure.
That is added to a cost instead of a deduction? I don't understand that.
Yep. Mr. Carrero, are you the one able to explain the solar net metering credits and why it's a cost and not revenue?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So each individual unit, including the town, is billed net metering credits for panels that we use and alternative sources of energy. Subsequently to that, we also generate revenue off of that. So on the revenue side, you would see us generating revenue on local receipts. You don't see that here, but it has to be budgeted as an expense because those bills have to be paid per enterprise fund.
So just, so I understand it. It's essentially an allocating of the expenses to this fund?
Correct.
Okay. Any, on the aisle, please?
Joan Menard, Precinct 9. Along the same vein, is the town overhead, is that a percent of something? What's it a percent of?
So, Madam Moderator, so the overhead is calculated on a number of employees, the benefits that are associated with them, and also the evaluation that the town has for what's called GASP and retirement. And so there's a calculation that goes into each one of these enterprise funds that the town has then allowed to charge off to them.
Salary line? Do you have a follow-up question?
I'm sorry, yes. Is it a percentage of the salary line?
Yes, we take, for instance, the town collective salary. They would collect bills. The town accountant's salary would produce invoices. We take a percentage of that, and we allocate that back to the enterprise funds.
Thank you. Any further questions on Article 16? In the back, please.
Karen MacArthur, Precinct 7. We received a water bill in the spring for $2,200, which was sort of funny. I calculated it would have required us flushing our toilets 230 times a day every day for six months. I called the town. She was very helpful, referred me to an outside company who had replaced a part of the water meters. They insisted they had done that and that they were correct. She said she had a picture of the person in my basement on a specific day changing the meter, which was not true. I'm wondering where the town, oh, I want to say, the town came, did the work. It was, it was quick. It was perfect. Where in the budget is the money for hiring this outside firm to do the work that the town did much more efficiently and much more accurately? Because our actual water bill was $189.
Bar?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So to answer the question, we, I believe, a meeting, one meeting, one town meeting ago, and maybe now two town meetings ago, the town voted to have the system replaced with an AMR system, an automatic metering system, where they went in houses and installed devices for more accuracy, and also to have us go to a quarterly billing system for residents then to determine leaks a lot quicker than being on a semi-annual system. And it also helps the residents budget a little bit better. We do have that contracted with the company. There are instances where the town water department has gone out and done that in cooperation with that company, and we find it more efficient where the residents can, you know, if they don't, after the third or fourth time, are not responding to it, the water department will go out and initiate that changeover with the residents.
Mr. Carrero, is it in this enterprise fund that that money comes from? She was looking for where the budget line item is, or is it part of our?
So that was an article that was put in. It was essentially a borrowing that paid for that whole project. And how the enterprise funds work, they're generated on rates. So as you pay your water bill, that money and that revenue is captured within each individual enterprise fund.
Go ahead.
My question was, do we have a mechanism to evaluate whether paying $1.4 million to an outside company is more efficient than hiring an employee or two from the town to do the work more accurately?
Go ahead, Mr. Carrero.
So the number of residents right now that have water bills is sometime, somewhere around, I believe, about 10,000 accounts. With a workforce of probably only two or three people, it would be, it would take a significant amount of time for the employees of the town and that department to go out and install each one of those individual units. And that was the reason why it was done, and hopefully we can get the project done by December. It would take much more time to do it internally.
Okay. So any other question with regard to Article 16? Okay. Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 16, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 16 passes at 10:05 a.m. I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn from our annual town meeting and open our special town meeting. It's called adjourning because you can go back into it. Thank you. Do I have a second? Thanks. All in favor of adjourning from this town meeting and opening? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. The motion to adjourn passes at 10:06 a.m. So now we are in our special, our spring special town meeting. That is a separate pack, that is a separate, those are separate pages that were a separate packet that you received as part of your overall town meeting packet. I'm going to give you a second to get that. Okay, so, special town meeting, Article 1, Community Preservation Committee, FY2024, Community Housing and Historic Preservation Reserve. Mr. Conlon, do you want to speak to that? Please?
I'm back briefly. Article 1, this is a housekeeping article to correct an omission in CPC recommendations to the October 2023 town meeting. At the October 23 town meeting, the town meeting approved funding the Pascomansit Drinking Water Protection land acquisition from CPA Open Space Reserves. At the October town meeting, the CPC did not submit an article to transfer funds from the unrestricted reserve to the open space reserve to cover all of the reserve commitment for the project. This was an omission, and we apologize to the town meeting for that error. The recommended transfer of FY24 reserves will fully fund the project commitment as previously approved by the town meeting. Move that the town meeting approved this article.
And I have a second. Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 800.
And the Select Board?
Select Board recommends 500.
Great. Any discussion on Special Town Meeting, Article 1? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Special Town Meeting, Article 1, passes at 10:08. Special Town Meeting, Article 2, Appropriation for Previously Approved Capital Project. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 2 of the Special Town Meeting seeks to fund $57,736.97 from Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings for the Violetta Wells voted at the time, at the, excuse me, June 2019 Spring Annual Town Meeting. The town wishes to avoid incurring the additional expense of potential borrowing costs.
Thank you. Thank you. And a second. Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends 800.
And Select Board Recommendation, please.
Select Board recommends 500.
Any discussion on Special Town Meeting, Article 2? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Special Town Meeting, Article 2, passes at 10:09. Special Town Meeting, Article 3, Appropriation for Previously Approved Capital Project. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 3 of the Special Town Meeting seeks to fund $359,804.84 from surplus revenue for the Veterans Memorial Stadium. the Veterans Memorial Stadium construction project, voted at the October twenty nineteen fall annual town meeting. The town wishes to avoid incurring the additional expense of potential borrowing costs.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends seven zero zero.
Select Board.
Select Board recommends five zero.
Any discussion on special town meeting Article three? On the aisle, please.
Gentlemen, our precinct nine, I'm sorry, but if we only have two hundred and fifty-nine thousand approximately in the surplus revenue, how are we allocating three hundred and fifty-nine thousand against it?
So these are, that was a different account. We have, if this, if town meeting approves this, the balance in the general fund, reserve fund would be thirty-six thousand, ninety-five dollars and eighteen cents. The prior question was out of the water, I believe, of the sewer that you had previously. So this, each individual fund certifies its own retained earnings. So this is coming out of the general fund.
So it's the surplus revenue general fund?
Correct.
General fund surplus, I'm confused.
Right, and what he gave you last time was related to our enterprise fund.
Correct.
Oh, I was looking for the general fund surplus revenue.
That wasn't related to the warrant article, so he didn't provide it, but maybe he can provide you with the general fund surplus revenue now? Do you have the balance for that?
The balance is thirty-six thousand, ninety-five dollars and eighteen cents if town meeting votes to approve this.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? The gentleman right here, please.
Peter Howen, precinct one, I just want to clarify, is this an additional three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars to the amount that was approved back in two thousand and nineteen?
Three, Madam Moderator. Once, when the article, excuse me, when the funding was borrowed back in that time, there wasn't enough borrowed. It's not that the project went over in cost, it's that there wasn't enough borrowed at the time. So it is not in addition to the project.
Thank you. Any further discussion on special town meeting Article three? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Special Town Meeting Article three passes at ten twelve a.m. I will entertain a motion to dissolve our special town meeting. Thank you. And a second. All in favor of dissolving special town meeting? Opposed? If you're opposed, please raise your hand. Thank you. Our special town meeting dissolves at ten twelve. We're back into the regular town meeting. And we are doing Article seventeen.
Can you ask a quick question?
Tell me what it's related to, maybe.
Finance committee. How many members?
Nine members to the finance committee.
So every time there's a recommendation, I've seen six, zero, zero, eight, zero, zero, that's how that totals, ten. Is there nine, ten, eight, seven, eight, nine?
So the gentleman has, he said, may I ask a question? And he's, and he's asking me about how many members sit on the finance committee. There are nine members on the finance committee, as we talked about in the early, and he's saying, he's adding it up and he's coming up with some number greater than nine. I'm not really, I'm not really, can we talk?
So the first number is those in favor that were present? The zero is that nobody that was present opposed? And the other zero is that nobody that was present abstained?
Okay, so, you got it? Okay, so I'll repeat it because our clerk understood the question probably better than I did. When you're looking at the recommendations, the first number is the people who voted in favor of the article, as long as, unless it says, the R means recommend, so if they recommended it, the first number is the people who voted in favor of recommending it, the second number is the people who voted against recommending it, and the third number is the people who abstained. Okay, sure. Article seventeen, funding sewer department enterprise fund. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article seventeen funds the Sewer Department Enterprise Fund pursuant to mass general law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and one-half. The FY twenty-five recommended budget is six million, nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second? Thank you. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends seven zero zero.
Select Board.
Select Board recommends five zero.
Any discussion on Article seventeen? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article seventeen, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article seventeen passes at ten fourteen. Article eighteen, funding Dartmouth Cable Television Enterprise Fund. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article sixteen funds the Cable DCTV Enterprise Fund pursuant to mass general laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and one-half. The FY twenty-five recommended budget is six hundred and fifteen thousand, four dollars.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends five zero zero.
And the Select Board.
Select Board recommends five zero.
Any discussion on Article eighteen? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article eighteen, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article eighteen passes at ten fifteen. Article nineteen. Article nineteen, funding Waterways Management Enterprise Fund. Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article nineteen funds the Waterways Management Enterprise Fund pursuant to mass general laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three and one-half. The FY twenty-five recommended budget is three hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars.
I have a motion and a second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends five zero zero.
And the Select Board recommendation.
Select Board recommends five zero.
Any discussion on Article nineteen? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article nineteen, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article nineteen passes at ten sixteen. Article twenty. Personnel bylaw amendment, salary adjustment. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, thank you. This would amend the town's Schedule E for seasonal and part-time positions to change the pay for the following positions. Beet rake operator, fifty dollars per hour. Library tech for less than fifteen hours, scheduled from a compensation range of twenty dollars to twenty-six dollars per hour. And the assistant recreation director, nineteen dollars per hour.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends six zero zero.
And Select Board.
Select Board recommends five zero.
Okay, any discussion on Article twenty? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article twenty, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article twenty passes at ten seventeen. Article twenty-one, establishment of long-term capital stabilization fund. This requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, this is the result of the Long-Term Capital Planning Committee established by the Select Board this past year, which included members of the Select Board, the Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, Town Administration, and others. The result of that group was to establish a long-term capital stabilization fund for large capital projects in the future. This would establish that long-term capitalization, capital stabilization fund for the purpose of funding and implementing capital improvements. So it's a start to plan for the future.
I have a motion and a second. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends five zero zero.
And Select Board.
Select Board recommends five zero.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article twenty-one? I'm sorry, I heard somebody, but, oh, Mr. Tattelbaum, I'm sorry.
I'd just like to make a comment on the long-range plan. This is the new group made up of key players. We spend money, Sean mentioned, the DPW, finance, capital plan, et cetera. And one of the comments from Mr. Dabney regarding all these studies we're doing, these are all designed so that we can look at the total package. It's going to involve a lot of short-term fixes, especially in DPW, and long-term plans to replace plants, schools, bridges, et cetera. When we do it, how we do it, how we design it, and then how we pay for it, it's a process that takes time. We met, we met many times, and we were going to pick up for the fall to continue the process. It's, it can be a daunting and scary process because you look at the amount of money being spent, upwards of maybe three hundred million dollars over the course of thirty, thirty, forty years. It's a deliberate process, it's a public process. There's no decision made, there's no schools going to be stopped, be built tomorrow morning. But on the other hand, it's critical that we do long-range planning so we can do it at the right time, be efficient, and also make it as affordable as possible. And I'd like to comment, congratulate the group in terms of how we've met in the process we've gone through, and we're going to continue to keep that process going, you know, in a logical and efficient way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article twenty-one? Gentlemen down front, please.
Peter Howen, precinct one, I just want to make sure that funding that comes out of this fund, once it's created, does that funding still have to be voted on by town meeting? Or is that something that can be done by an appointed board?
It requires a town meeting vote.
Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article twenty-one, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article twenty-one passes at ten twenty. Article twenty-two, appropriation to long-term capital stabilization fund. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, now that the long-term capitalization, capital stabilization fund is established, we would like to appropriate one million dollars from the general fund surplus revenue to the long-term capital stabilization fund.
Thank you. And a second. Finance Committee recommendation, please.
Finance Committee recommends five zero zero.
Select Board recommendation. Select Board recommendation on that?
Select Board recommends five zero.
And any discussion on Article twenty-two? Right there, please.
Kathy Del Sordo, precinct five. Is that dollar amount going to be invested in some way to increase the amount as time goes on with this fund?
Mr. Carrero.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So that will sit in a general fund account, which we then invest in the aggregate, which we use CDs, short-term CDs. Right now, we're receiving a rate of about five point one percent, so that will be, that will generate interest over time.
Thank you. In front here, we have another question, please.
Hi, Meg Rogers, precinct five. In the future, so this might not even be a question that's answerable yet, is there a set percentage or dollar amount that is the goal to move to that fund on an annual basis, or will it depend on surplus? Or is it just going to be thrown out to us to vote on?
Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you. There's, there's no set amount. It could be zero some years, it could be in excess of a million dollars other years. It's just whatever's available, and depending on what capital projects are coming up in the near future and how that money needs to be allocated, so it's pretty flexible.
Anything else on this article? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article twenty-two, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article twenty-two passes at ten twenty-two a.m. Article twenty-three, zoning bylaw accessory dwelling units.
Hello, everyone. I am Christine O'Grady, the planning director, and I am here on behalf of the planning board to present the next article for town meeting. This article is for the creation of a new zoning bylaw. We are proposing it to be Article fifty, and it is for accessory dwelling units. The purpose of the article is to provide housing options for families that reduce maintenance costs and are more affordable, develop a range of housing types, reduce the demands on municipal services and materials, used materials more efficiently, to promote the development in harmony with the town's natural features, to establish flexible residential development standards and procedures, and to facilitate housing production in town. The proposed ADU bylaw will be done as of right in the single residence A, B, C districts and the general residence districts. They are attached to and subordinate to the principal structure on a site. There will be some allowances for some detached units. You have much more information on that within your packages. They will have dimensional limits of one thousand square feet.
Do I have a motion?
I move that the town of Dartmouth create the new Article fifty of the zoning bylaw to be titled accessory dwelling units.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends seven zero zero.
And Select Board recommendation.
Select Board recommends five zero.
Any discussion on Article twenty-three? Right here first, please. The gentleman.
Thank you, Jerry Fishbein, precinct five. I just overall support this, this article. I had a question about the exception that all persons occupying accessory dwelling units must be related, and wanted to understand how that was interpreted. For instance, my single father-in-law has a partner, would they be able to live there even though they weren't unmarried and in some definitions unrelated? Thank you.
Great question. Ms. O'Grady?
Yes, I think that the purpose of putting that language in is so that there is no misunderstanding. We want people who are committed to being together in some form of a thing. I think the way that you should look at it is that families and related, you know, groups come in many different forms, so we've tried to leave it somewhat vague so that people can be accommodated. And we also want to have, the second bedroom allowance is for, you know, in the case of caregivers or things like that, so we do provide a little bit of flexibility. We want it to have some relation to it. We want, you know, some type of relationships within all of the people and the structures, but we don't want to limit anything.
I think we had another question in the back row over there, please. Thank you.
Sugiduchi, precinct nine. There was Article nine as part of the language is under single residency districts. Unfortunately, the, the document wasn't, doesn't, is not numbered, so I can't tell you what page it's on, but number seven, the, the sentence is incomplete. And I was wondering what the continuation of that was. So if you go to your packet that you, the portion of the packet that you provided, it's listed as Article nine, single residency districts. And then if you flip the page and go to the bottom, number seven, traffic will not be objectionally increased above that associated with a residential home if more than, and then it ends. It's not complete.
That's not what's being voted on. That's the existing.
That is the zoning bylaw? So let me, so there was a packet, that was a, I'm sorry, there was a packet distributed that was separate from your warrant packet. It's entitled Article twenty-three, Creation of Zoning Bylaw Accessory Dwellings. It has a synopsis of the article on the front page. If, within that packet, it shows you the existing, correct me if I'm wrong, the existing bylaw, and shows you the redlining of what the changes are. And so Ms. Sugiduchi is referring to something that's about, I don't know, six or eight, maybe eight, eight or ten pages in, it's the section titled Article nine, single residency district. Is that right? And then there's a section within there that she's highlighting, the sentence is incomplete. Ms. O'Grady, is that something you could address for us, please?
Yes, I can. So this, the packet we gave you was, we tried to give you the redline language of what we're going to be deleting from the existing bylaws. So what Ms. Sugiduchi is referring to is Article nine, which is the existing bylaw, like I said. We couldn't give you all of Article nine, or all of Article ten, et cetera, because we would have added to over like two hundred pages to your, to your packet. So we didn't want to do that. So we were just getting at that we were going to be deleting that whole, that whole number up above it, the red line, and then that the rest of that, whatever is said for the rest of Article seven, or number seven of that article, is still the same and will still remain the same. You can always find all of that information regarding your zoning bylaws on the town website. So all of that existing language is there as well.
So the article...
We're not touching anything after that.
Is the Article seven, is that an addition, or is that existing language?
No, that's existing language.
Or number seven, I mean. Okay. So number seven is, there's no change to that number seven?
No, there is not.
Okay. Any further questions? Gentlemen right here, please. I see you, and I'll come back to you.
Kevin Murphy, precinct eight. Madam Chairman, my question would be, what becomes of the provisions if the property is sold or transferred?
Ms. O'Grady?
The accessory dwelling unit would remain in place. The owners of the, of the new, of the property, the new owners would have the decision in how they wanted to move forward with that particular structure.
Here's a follow-up question. You're not controlling that.
So the related people, how you are to be related is going to vary as the house is sold? What if you want to occupy the dwelling or that area to a totally non-related person?
So, Ms. O'Grady?
So it'll be up to the owner of the property if they want to do that.
So what he's asking?
Yes, we're trying to set that up so that for initially, for right now, we want to take care of the families in Dartmouth. We want to take care of the elderly. You have approximately 20% of your population is over the age of 65, and you have another 90 people that are over the, or I'm sorry, another 600 people that are over the age of 90. So we want to have these things established for them. We also want to allow young people to remain in town and give them options, you know, if they come back from college or something like that, and they, you know, want to be living on their own, they maybe can pay something. So we want to have those options in place, but then again, we're not going to take away your rights outright afterwards.
So just to follow, just to see if we can get an answer to the question that he's asking. If the property were sold, is the subsequent homeowner required to use the accessory dwelling unit for someone related to them, or could they then use it for someone not related to them?
They could use it for someone not related to them.
Thank you. Any further questions on Article, this gentleman right here?
Robert Brown, Precinct 9. Why, my question is, why was it necessary to delete the accessory apartment, and does that have any impact on people who are already using an accessory apartment?
Great question. Ms. O'Grady?
So no, it does not have any, any impact on existing accessory apartments. That bylaw, those pieces to those bylaws are well over 30 years old. We needed to update. We needed to increase the size a little bit. You have two-acre zoning here in town, so you have, you know, a little bit more space than many other cities and towns in which to work with. So no, it does not do that. We needed to come up with something a little bit more modern. The Planning Board has been working on it for over 10 years. So there are people on the Select Board, the Finance Committee, people in this room that have been a part of the Planning Board and have been trying to bring this to fruition over the last few years.
Any further questions on this article? On the aisle, please.
Susan Kramer, Precinct 5. If there is an accessory dwelling unit and there are elderly people who own the home and have the unit, is there a provision where if they need care, a person can move into that accessory dwelling unit who is not directly related to the elderly people?
Yes. This is to provide a series of housing options. So that is something that we have taken into consideration, that caregivers could either be in the unit with somebody or they could be in the unit themselves. So yes.
Any further questions? We have a follow-up out there, please.
Quick question. I noticed there was no mention made of tiny houses as part of the accessory dwelling unit. And I was, and is that, are they excluded in any way?
Well, tiny houses are kind of standalone units, right? This, the main purpose of this is to have attached units. Like I said, subordinate to the main structure. So it's not really a tiny house type of thing. There are things for, you know, longstanding, if you have a barn or something on your property that you want to convert. If it was, you know, there prior to or whatever, then maybe you could convert that to a tiny house, but it's not to build an outright tiny house on the property.
Do you have a follow-up question, Ms. Sugiduchi?
So you're saying that a tiny house could not be attached?
Well, you can attach, if it meets all of the requirements and it's 1,000 square feet or less, yes, you can do that, but it can't be a standalone unit.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? The gentleman over there. One second, let me get you a microphone so we can be, we can hear you. Please.
I think this is a great idea.
I'm sorry, could you?
Oh, sorry. Tyler, District 6.
Thank you.
I think this is a great idea to have these alternative types of housing. I'm wondering why you decided to not allow it be detached?
It will be allowed detached in some very rare instances, but again, we don't want to, you know, we're not using this for some other purpose. The main purpose of this is for Dartmouth people to take care of Dartmouth people. So we feel as though you could have something attached. That being said, it doesn't have to be, you know, it could be a walkway between the two, or it could be something like that.
Preserve the character.
To preserve the character of the town.
Thank you. I have another question over here, please.
Lori Ann Miller, Precinct 9. I was a member of the Planning Board for 30 years and worked on this project in the past. This is a win-win situation. I mean, I'm reaching my elderly years, and I would love to turn my raised ranch into a downstairs for me and upstairs for my children. It's a win-win to help us live in this town. It's a win-win to help students who live in this town. My son went to UMass Dartmouth. He didn't really want to live at home, but he did. He would have loved to live downstairs. It would have been better. We could have turned it into an apartment for him. This is a win-win situation. It's really meant to help the elderly, but it's also going to help our next generation who want to live with their parents and move into town but have their own privacy.
Any further discussion? The gentleman right here, please.
Mark Murgazel, District 5. Is there anything that prevents someone from go ahead and building an extension to their house? Maybe children move in, move in and then later on decide to move out? Is there anything that would prevent that area to be rented?
No, there is not anything to keep it from being rented.
Sorry, the gentleman down here? Yep, and then we'll, I'll get to you, Mr. Misho.
Gil Borges, Precinct 4. I actually have an accessory apartment. Unfortunately, when I built mine, you could only do 600 square feet, which is a little bigger than a shed. So as I get older and my wife gets older, she does not want to move into that. I'm hoping that this passes and my daughter can build a house and we can move into her accessory apartment, where you have two bedrooms. That is so much better. Again, my wife does not want to go into a little tiny one-bedroom accessory apartment. We built it over 20 years ago for my mother. She got 20-plus years of rent-free living, which was great. And now we rent it to an elderly person. One of the concerns people are having is what happens to it after. You have to remember, you're still going to live next door, so you're not going to want drug dealers and partyers living next door to you. So don't worry about what happens to it in the future. The owner has to still live at that residence, and nobody wants bums living next door to them. Thank you.
Mr. Misho, would you pass that mic over, please? Yep.
Robert Misho, Precinct 2. Is, how much is concern is there for the size of the lot? And if you're on septic system to put an addition like that on where you could have, you know, more family members coming in, but if your leashing field wasn't originally built for it, who's going to be responsible for making sure that those rules are covered, you know, or the size of your lot? If you have an 8,000-square-foot lot, you know, it's a lot different than if you got a two-acre lot to put an addition on. I mean, it could, it could change the profile of some of the neighborhoods if, you know, there's not some real control over who would be able to build that 1,000-square-foot addition on a lot. Thank you.
Ms. O'Grady?
So what I would say to you is, the majority of your town is zoned for approximately two-acre zoning, right? So most of the parcels are bigger. We did make it so that, you know, we put it in certain districts, and that is a maximum. That does not mean you have to go up to that level. I can tell you that the building department and our online permitting system, you know, there are all different departments that will be looking at it. So one of the things that happens with any, any addition to any residents in, in the town, you know, the Board of Health looks at certain things, you know, so they'll look at that. If there's some reason why it can't meet the underlying zoning for the given area or for your lot, then, you know, you might not be able to do it quite as large as you wanted to, or you, you know. But for the most part, everybody will be allowed to, and most of your lots are big enough.
Mr. Savasana, would you like to comment on this?
Yeah, I can answer that. You're asking about the septic system. If the septic system is approved for only two bedrooms and you're adding a third bedroom, you would still need approval from the Board of Health, separate and distinct from any zoning relief. So the town looks at a building permit from very, several different perspectives. Zoning is one issue. Setbacks and things from the, you know, from the Building Commissioner, and certainly, and if it's a septic, it has to be approved by the Board of Health as well.
Thank you. I have a question down here, please. Mr. Conlon.
Jim Conlon, Precinct 8. Is there consideration of restriction on short-term rentals?
So what I would tell you with regard to that, this is for long-term residency. This is not for short-term rentals. If that is something that the Planning Board wants to take up in the future, we will take that. Again, this is for something that is going to be for a permanent residence more than 30 days. So no.
So I'm sorry, is, I'm not hearing the question. Is there, is there a restriction? I think the follow-up question was, is there a restriction on short-term rentals as part of this bylaw?
It's for long-term residency, so it's not for short-term rentals. It specifically says that within there.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion on Article 23? Are we ready, I'm sorry. Mrs. Bancroft down front, please.
Gloria Bancroft, Precinct 1. I just wanted confirmation that full kitchens would be allowed?
Yes, full kitchens will be allowed.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? This requires two-thirds vote for passage. Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 23, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 23 passes at 10:42. Article 24, amendments to wetlands bylaw provisions. Mr. Garrett, or Mr. McGinnis, Mr. Garrett, I think is talking on this one?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, members of this town meeting, members of the Select Board, and the Finance Committee. I'm here as the Environmental Affairs Coordinator to first thank you for hearing this article and to present and summarize what this article is. The Wetlands Protection Bylaw has been the subject of quality use for over 34 years. It was put together in 1990 and has not really been comprehensively reviewed in those 34 years. What we are asking is for you to consider some amendments which bring this bylaw more in line with current practices. And it also tries to simplify the bylaw in such a way to clarify certain definitions of terms, jurisdictional terms, which were never clearly defined previously. It also tries to segregate and indicate the distinctions between the State Wetlands Protection Act and the Town Wetland Protection Bylaw. Many don't understand that there is a distinction. There is a state law and there is a local law. And while they are similar in many ways, they are not equivalent. The town bylaw tends to be somewhat more restrictive than the state law. So we've tried to address that and make that a little bit more clear. We've defined terms such as freshwater wetlands and land subject to flooding, which are jurisdictional resource areas that were mentioned in narrative form but not clearly defined, and as a jurisdictional resource, they really did need to be defined. We did add one new requirement in the bylaw, which has been the subject of much discussion over the years with the Waterways Committee, with the Harbor Master, with abutters to projects, and that has to do with permitted docks and piers. Currently, if a dock is permitted and constructed and by some fate is destroyed by storm, climate, or whatever, the town at times has had to go out and pick up debris off public lands and public beaches, and nobody has ever been accountable for that except the town. What this bylaw does, and it is the one change in the bylaw, is now charges the dock holder a fee for the cleanup if they choose to reapply to reconstruct their dock. Dartmouth has a plethora of docks along its entire coastline, and this has been an issue, especially in recent past with southern propagating storms. What should be clearly understood by this town meeting is that this bylaw amendment does not expand the bylaw, nor does it change its intent. The Conservation asks the town meeting to approve these amendments for the town and for better, more smooth operation and more smooth understanding of the town residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Thank you. So I have a motion, and Mr. Paul, I'm assuming you're going to second since you are willing to move. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends 7-0-0.
And the Select Board recommendation, please?
5-0.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 24? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 24, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 24 passes at 10:47. Article 25, 247 Russell Mills Road, Old Police Station Site, sale of land. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes. Pursuant to Mass Generalize, Chapter 40, Section 3, this article would authorize the Select Board to sell all or such, or a portion of the real property known as the Old Police Station, Assessor's Map 132 Lot 1, commonly known as 247 Russell Mills Road, and to set the sale price on that property if determined to be sold.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. McDonald, are you moving this? And a second? Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 1, 5 against, and no extensions.
So just let me clarify. The Finance Committee recommend, is a do not recommend or recommending against?
1 recommend, 5 against.
Thank you. And the Select Board recommendation?
Select Board recommends is 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Article 25? Here we go. Right down front, please.
Peter Howen, Precinct 1. I actually have several questions in regards to this article.
Okay. Go through them one at a time.
Of course. I'd like to hear from the Finance Committee on why it is a 1 to 5, not recommended.
Okay. So let me get your answer to that. Would you like to speak with them, please?
Okay, I'll give you the majority opinion, and Terry will give you the minority opinion. Five Finance Committee members voted to not recommend this article. This article is vague and grants authority without providing any details. It is improbable that the land will never be needed for any future town project. It could not, and could not serve a useful public purpose through a long-term lease or more beneficial land exchange. Currently, the property is in use as part of the Bliss Corner remediation. I'd also like to add, you know, when we looked at the information, we have to vote on the information that is presented to us, and we had no idea how many acres, you know, what the land was connected to. So we just, we voted, five people voted against. I'd like to turn the mic over to
Turn it on, you got to turn it on so it's good. You got to turn it on so it's good to slide to you, please.
How about now? Terry Ham, Precinct 4. So I walked the police station when, after it was closed. It's in terrible shape, and the town meeting has voted to demolish it. I think that if there was somebody who was, I received the mailing that was sent out last week. I think if there was a buyer who wanted to come in and purchase this and redevelop it, we would have seen that happen. The town has a lot of priorities. You've heard some of them today, and the expense of maintaining a building, insuring it, et cetera, I just felt that it was time to move on from this.
Thank you. Did you have a follow-up question, Mr. Howen? Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Simmons?
I just wanted to add a couple more details if I could. As mentioned already, we said it was vague, so that made me do some more research on this property. I mean, you need to know that, you know, this is 2.43 acres, and it has 390 feet of frontage on Russell Mills Road, and it includes not only the Old Police Station, but also the Dartmouth Community Media Building, two storage buildings, a World War I memorial, and is currently used, an FCC-regulated 150-foot antenna tower. It's a very valuable Dartmouth asset, and it's part of a 27.9-acre town-owned parcel. You know, in total, there are six connected town-owned parcels, including Crapo Field, bringing this total up to almost 28 acres. As recently as 2022, at the Springtown Meeting, we voted to purchase another adjacent 1.06-acre property located at 245 Russell Mills Road to expand the current town-owned property. And currently, you know, happening at 247 Russell Mills Road, as mentioned, you know, is the Bliss Corner remediation. You know, in 2022, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency began the cleanup of toxic soil from the Bliss Corner neighborhood, and currently, that area is used as a staging for the remediation of Bliss Corner under a signed agreement with the EPA through April of 2025. The agreement will likely be extended, per our Director of Public Health, due to the status of the project, and it is our obligation to families in that neighborhood to continue this critical cleanup, no matter how long it takes. Also, for over three years and as recently as May 2024, the Old Police Station has been used by the Massachusetts Police for active shooter training. The smaller buildings are used by the Harbor Master for storage. There are no other options with easy access to our waterfront. The antenna is still in use and is a critical part of the town microwave link system. Every town site south of the Old Police Station receives its internet via that town located on the tower, located on that property. This includes the security camera link for Round Hill, upon Agansett Park, Dias Landing, and the Maritime Center. This tower also provides internet service for the bucket at impot Agansett Park for their point-of-sale and inventory system, Round Hill for their beach sticker scanner operation, and also for the Harbor Master's office. So it's very important that we need to look at that going forward. We're using that land today, and it's part of a 28-acre town-owned parcel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Did you have a follow-up, Mr. Howen?
Yes, I did. So I think it's very important to note, just a couple town meetings ago, there was discussion about a lot on Reed Road and whether or not we would be able to sell that or utilize it. And at that time, it was discussed that the town does not own many buildable, large-acre lots for town growth. It is a big concern for me that we're going to turn around and sell one of our one developmental lots that we can utilize for town facilities or town growth. I'm also under the impression that when we voted to approve the new police station, there was $600,000-ish approved during that vote for the demolition of the hazardous materials in that building. I'm wondering what happens to that $600,000 if the building is not demolished? What happens to that money that was appropriated for that particular purpose?
Mr. Carr, could you answer that question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So if it was an article at town meeting, that will sit in the article until it gets rescinded. So anything that's funded by town meeting stays in that article until either the department has suspended it or it gets rescinded.
So rescinded, it would have to come before town meeting to say, we've not used this and we're not looking to use it. Okay. Ms. Stone, and then I will get back to him. Right down here, please. She hasn't spoken today.
Hi, Laura Stone, Precinct 8. So I think there's a collapsed question in the gentleman that just came up, so I wanted to clarify. We have not demolished the building, and for anyone that's new to town meeting, the question about the building and the hazardous was around a Legionnaires' disease and Legionnaires' findings in that building. So I want to revisit why we have not demolished the building and used the $600,000 that we set aside, that town meeting approved, for getting rid of a building that we had concerns about whether it would be feasible to use and keep the land, but get rid of the hazardous building.
So let me, let me, it's a question that we've asked and gotten, it's a great question. Can you answer it for us?
Yes. So town meeting allocated funds, I want to say it was $450,000. The $600,000 may have been for the Gidley School, so that was years ago. But town meeting had voted to allocate funding for the demolition. That was kind of during COVID. As we came out, we advertised for the demolition, and we awarded the contract for the demolition. Because of the requirements and the age of the building, anything over 75 years old needs to go to the Historic Commission for approval. The Historic Commission was against demolishing the building for, you know, for reasons that I'm sure they can articulate, but they've made that clear with the Select Board. So they had come before the Board and many times before the Select Board to talk about saving the building. There's been a back and forth for a number of months, and it got to the point where the Select Board wanted to also evaluate selling the land, so that's why we're at now. So the contract for the demolition has been put on hold. It's probably, if was to move forward, it would have to be re-advertised, but, and we don't know what that price would be, but we imagine it would be around, or we may be back at town meeting to ask for more funding if it's going to be demolished because the prices have probably gone up.
The gentleman here, I see you, Mr. Mickelson, and I also see someone who hasn't spoken today, and I will get you all.
Gil Borges, Precinct 4. I'm wondering if anyone up there might know how much we've dumped into that property in the last 25 years, and then I had a couple of other questions.
Would anybody be able to, I'm not sure that we have those numbers readily available, but how much money has been spent on the Old Police Station site in the last 25 years?
I mean, do you want to talk about the expense for the trailers?
In millions, no. All the remodeling in millions in the last 25 years.
I mean, there was an addition done in the 80s. I'm not sure of the cost of that addition, so I'm not sure.
I'm not sure we can easily get you that information.
Now, town-owned properties are great. However, they don't pay taxes. Any idea how much revenue we would receive in the next 20 years if that property was sold? At bare minimum, how much revenue would we generate?
I mean, right now, it's zoned residential, so it would just be if whatever, if a residence was constructed on the property, so. I don't think that for a residential property, but, you know, it would be revenue, tax revenue, yes.
So it would probably be the, right. Do you have a follow-up question, Mr. Borges?
I did.
Okay, it's not you.
Oh, okay.
It's me allowing you the follow-up question. Go ahead. No problem.
Oh, I just lost my train of thought here.
Sorry.
Now, I think it's time, moving forward, is that we stop dumping money into a money pit and start piling up money on the revenue side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borges. The gentleman over there, and then Mr. Mickelson, and I will come back around.
Hi, I'm Christian Gavush-Silvera. I'm a resident of Precinct 7. After I heard of the hold on the demolition of this building, I joined a mini-committee to look further into options for this project. I would first like to address some of the concerns that we've heard regarding this project. Number one is, yes, this building can be made safe, and that cost would fall on the developer, not the town. There are countless examples of exact projects like this and exact problems like this happening in buildings that were remedied and remodeled. Next, I want to mention some benefits. You've all heard in the town annual report that income is low and we're in a dangerous financial position. This article will allow for the town to profit for once instead of spending over half a million dollars to tear down this building. This article will lead to continual tax income to the town through real estate tax, but also increased income from the tax-paying residents themselves. Next, our region is in a desperate need of housing, and other towns and cities have continued to be the ones to fill this burden, and it's time for us to step up and be creative. As for the Finance Committee's opinion, yes, this article was very vague, and unfortunately, this article was supposed to be jointly written to help, with the help of some residents, but that did not happen. Furthermore, there were multiple ideas proposed, which included a lease to a developer or to subdivide the lot to remove the antenna and the area in the back being used by the EPA, so that way those areas can remain intact and used without hurting the town. The thing is, we have three choices. We vote no on this article, and the Select Board will still have control over the land and could spend over half a million dollars tearing this building down, as previously voted. We vote yes and trust our Select Board, but understand that this article just gives them the ability to sell, but it does not mean they will. They will still have the authority to demolish it. Or lastly, we could vote to make the Select Board accountable to developing a more thorough article outlining exactly what's going to be sold and when. So I would like to submit a written amendment to this article, but I need guidance on what that process is. Thank you.
Mr. Mickelson?
Just a second.
You're asking, I don't write your amendments, so if you have a written amendment, if you'd like to move to make an amendment, I'd entertain your motion to make an amendment. I need your amendment in writing.
That's my question. I have it, I have it in writing.
Okay, bring it up.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Why don't you read it to us and then?
Yeah, yeah.
Then give it to me, please.
Yep. The Select Board shall provide a clear article for the sale of the former police station located at 247 Russell Mills Road, Dartmouth, at the next town meeting, describing exactly what will be listed for sale and when it will be listed for sale, striking the entire verbiage of Article 25.
Stay on the scope of the warrant article. That's not a valid amendment.
So I don't think that you are able to require the Select Board to put a warrant article on the warrant. They control the warrant. Various groups in town can do it, or you can do it by citizen's petition, but we can't direct them to put something on the warrant. Okay. Mr. Mickelson?
Tony? Yeah, it's okay. I think everybody in this body knows where I'm at regarding this building. I've steadfastly believed that the building should come down. It's not, there's no proof that that building is safe. I wouldn't let my mother live in that building, number one. I think we need to, we need to call Anthony Savastano up, and if this building were sold, what would be the legal ramifications to the town?
Mr. Savastano, do you want to comment on that?
I think the issue that I had looked at briefly, because I don't know what the plan would be for a subdivision, is if the property were subdivided, my understanding, there might be some setback issues, at least with regard to the antenna. Until I saw a plan, I could not comment specifically on the zoning, but you may need requirements or approvals from the ZBA for setback relief use. You cannot get a use variance in a single-residence district, so whoever bought it would have to comply with the use in that district. There also may be lot coverage and frontage issues. Again, those are hard to comment on until I see an actual plan provided, but there may be potential zoning issues if it is attempted to be subdivided.
Thank you. Mr. Bowles?
Bill Bowles, Finance Committee.
You got to turn on the mic. One second, please.
All right. Bill Bowles, Finance Committee. It would have helped us when we were voting on this if we had an appraised value, and I've been listening to everybody's comments, and I think that would have been a little helpful in determining whether we should sell it or not, and perhaps that information could be provided at a later day. I heard this morning that there wasn't appraisal value in, and it would have been nice if we had had that in front of us when we were going through the deliberations to vote on it.
Thank you. A lot of, Mr. Taylor first, because I have not heard him speak today. Yep.
I would just like to point out to those who think there's tax revenue here that in single-family home development, the cost of community services is significant, and the tax revenue could be peanuts, the net tax revenue, that is. I would urge that we support the Finance Committee in not doing this at this time, and we don't have to direct the Select Board or anybody else to do something else. I'm sure something else will emerge that might include a thoughtful analysis of the real finances and take it from there.
Thank you. Mr. Mickelson, you are saying you are not?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I wasn't done. I also would like to have Tim Lancaster come up and give his view about if the building were sold and what it might, the impact it might have on the new rec center.
I don't, I don't think that's an appropriate, do you have another, do you have anything else?
Yes, yeah, I do. I would like to ask for a sense of the meeting.
In terms of?
And my question would mean, how many are in favor of not re-authorizing the demolition of the police station? We already have that authorization. So given that the Select Board has that ability, I'd like a sense of the meeting today. Just show of hands.
We all know how much I love a sense of the meeting vote, especially since it's not on our warrant. I'm going to let some discussion continue here about this. Mr. Mishud. I see you, Mr. Howen, but I've got a bunch of people who haven't had a chance to speak. Mr. Mishud.
A while back, I spoke to a Realtor and asked him if the town could sell a piece of property that's under that particular situation, and he said there's no laws against that. My feeling is if the town got together and put a plan together with a contract, excuse me, to offer the property with a commitment that it will, whoever buys it has to clarify that lot to make it safe, and whatever they want to do with it, that's permitted in that zone to take it. I don't believe we should spend $600,000 to make a hole in the ground. Let somebody else take care of it if we can, and that would be private enterprise. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Toomey, we haven't heard from Mr. Toomey today in the back, please. I'm trying to give people who haven't spoken an opportunity first and then follow up. So I'd like Mr. Toomey first, and then I'll recognize you.
Joe Toomey, Precinct 5. I was on the Planning Board for a while. I have not heard anyone say anything about all of these items that were brought up by that Finance Committee lady, that we actually are trying to buy the property next door at 245. If it's, if the land itself is useful, and I think it very well is, and it's connected to the park there where the kids play the sports, I think we should, as a town, hang on to that property where it's located. And the building itself, I realize that it's not habitable. I know historically, from being around the town a while, that it's the plumbing that was leaking, and why don't we just gut the inside of the building, take all of the plumbing out, and have that building be only a storage building for all the archival vault documents that we have in the town hall, so the town hall has more room for future growth? And if we use that building to not live in, but to just use for the practice for the police, for active shooter, and also use it for storage for documents, and you don't have to live there, you don't have to have anybody support any kind of health situation inside that building. you don't have to have anybody support any kind of health situation inside that building, that the town, if it hangs on to that property, we could certainly use that property for a lot of other things. And that tower, we wouldn't have to move it. We wouldn't have to worry about if the new owner is going to keep it there, if we need zoning setbacks for it. That tower is very important where it is, close to the shore, if we have emergencies with hurricanes and we need a communication system in the future that's in that area. I don't understand why we want to just sell the property along with the building just because the building is not habitable. That building can be used for several other things that do not incorporate or involve habitability. Thank you.
Okay. One second. Thank you. Can you hand it back to her? Mr. Haron, I haven't heard from, who's right on the aisle, right there behind you. He's at the end of the row.
I'd like to make a motion to indefinitely postpone this article.
So we have a motion before us for indefinite postponement. Do I have a second? Second. We're gonna vote on a motion to indefinitely postpone. All in favor of indefinite postponement? Opposed to indefinite postponement? The motion to indefinitely postpone passes at 11:11. Okay. Article 26, Land Acquisition, Pascomansett River Aquifer Land. And that would be...
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article includes a partnership between the Dartmouth Department of Public Works and the Buzzes Bay Coalition to purchase and protect 196 acres along the Pascomansett River within the Aquifer 2 protection area and adjacent to nearby water supply wells. The purchase price for the property is $815,000, and there have been many moving parts, including application and award of a grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for $350,000. This article requests that Town Meeting appropriate the purchase of this property by the DPW and the Water Commissioners, as well as appropriate the use of the grant funding from the state at $350,000. The... This property is also being funded by the Community Preservation Committee, where we use CPC funding that was appropriated last fall at $250,000 towards this purchase, as well as a donation from the Buzzes Bay Coalition at $215,000. The property will be managed by the Buzzes Bay Coalition, and conservation restriction is being reviewed currently at the state level. Once it's approved at the state level, it will be reviewed by the Town and Town Council and then submitted to the Select Board for approval and to the Community Preservation Committee. This purchase also allows the Department of Public Works and the Water Division to research and survey for future water supply wells in that area, as well, if needed in the future.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Thank you. And a second. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends 600.
And the Select Board recommendation?
Select Board recommends 50.
Any discussion on Article 26? Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Sean McDonald, Chairman, Select Board. At last night's meeting, we introduced the report from Mass DEP on the waterways, what they called the pathogen waterways throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Pascomansett is noted as one of them. The other one is the Shingle Island River. This is an opportunity for the town, hopefully, to work with Mass DEP, even though they decide to work themselves in a vacuum, on doing something on the Pascomansett. This is a big part of it. This is a big part of protecting our waterways and mostly protecting our wells, so I urge passage of this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I believe this is probably the article that was being referred to when there was a question about grant funding. Right, there was some grant money that came for this one. Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 26, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 26 passes at 11:15. Article 27, Citizens Petition All Alcohol Beverage License. Is there someone that is coming to talk on that? Is there anyone who's coming to speak on behalf of the sponsor? Okay, come on down to the mic in front, please.
Hi there. My name's Peter Bullard from Precinct 9.
Mr. Bullard, I'm gonna interrupt you because I guess I need a motion from a Town Meeting member to move forward on this. Do we have a motion to... And a second? Second, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Bullard. Thank you.
I'm embarrassed to say that this is my first-ever Town Meeting. My mother was a Town Meeting member for about 40 years, and the thought of her having a mic is frightening to me. Very traumatic for everybody, I'm sure. So like everybody here, I am blessed to live in the town of Dartmouth. Unlike many of you here, I'm older than dirt, but the advantage of being old is you have a historical perspective that maybe young people don't have. And one of the things I've witnessed and had the privilege of witnessing over the last several years is the revitalization of the village and its dynamic, whereas it did not used to be. So one of the beneficiaries of the village's revitalization is Farm &amp; Coast. They have developed a loyal and devoted customer base. And so they are thinking of expanding, and many of Farm &amp; Coast's customers would like more choices when it comes to beverages. They have presently a license to sell wine and beer, but they would like an all-alcoholic liquor license. The town is at its limits, and so in order for Farm &amp; Coast to be able to expand, we need the warrant passed that's been presented to you. I'd like to think that Farm &amp; Coast has been a good community citizen. They do not sell NIPs. There are no lottery sales, and there are no tobacco products, which I think minimizes litter. And so this is just an opportunity for Farm &amp; Coast to further service the needs of the village and the greater community. So I thank you for your consideration. We do have members from the Farm &amp; Coast team here if there are any detailed questions.
Thank you. Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation on this article, please?
Finance Committee recommends 600.
And the Select Board?
Select Board recommends 50.
Any discussion on Article 27 that's before us? Are we ready to vote? I'm sorry. Right here.
Thank you. Liz DePaolo, Precinct 4. Just a question of clarification. Is this an expansion to an off-premise retail license? Or is this an additional on-premise consumption license that restaurants typically use?
Well, they may be... They would be expanding the onsite, but they would... This is a license to be able to sell at retail all alcohol.
I have a follow-up question as well.
Yes, sure.
Will all employees at the specific location be stop-certified to serve the general public?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Anything else? Are we ready to vote on Article 27? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 27 passes at 11:19. Article 28. So I believe at this point, we're gonna do a presentation? Okay. So we're gonna have a very short presentation? Because you know how much I love a long presentation. So the Charter Review Committee is going to be doing a short presentation right now. It's going to be an overview of all of the charter... The proposed charter amendments. And then when we come back... Are you doing... And then when we come back, we'll... Or... I didn't know if that was a video presentation. I'm sorry.
It's me.
You're the video presentation. I love this, live. So... And then we will take up each article individually for discussion. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I stand before you as Heidi Silverbrook, Chair of the Charter Review Committee. I was appointed through the School Department in 2020, and I want to call your attention to a number of items that you have with you. One is... Was mailed to you, Article 28, Charter Amendments. This packet only deals with Article 28. If you're a Town Meeting member and had a valid email, I sent you our handouts that were not included in the packet. If you didn't have an email or you wanted to pick up a hard copy, the green, two-page item was out at the table. So these are the articles that I'm going to discuss right now. I want to thank Magnolia McCormish, who helped the Charter Review Committee put together this slide presentation. And in the handout, you will also see that I thank profusely the members of our committee that have worked over the past four years. You'll see that there are people who had stepped down and other people who had stepped up to the task. I'm gonna review all of the articles. The most important thing that I need to bring to your attention is that today, when you vote to move an article forward, what you're doing is moving the article to the Town voters. We are not accepting... Any act that you do today does not change the charter immediately. The Town residents must vote to approve that charter change in April of 2025. All charter changes will then take place throughout a transition period after that. We were an appointed board. There's two differences. There's an elected board. An elected board charter commission would be able to make changes on the spot. They themselves would decide that this is a change that needs to happen, and they would do that. We are members of an elected board, so we are bringing back our recommendations to you. We're an appointed board, thank you. Recommendations to you, and asking you to then pass these on to the voters. All right. We're gonna just take a look, and you will see who are the current members on the board. I myself, as I stated, was appointed by the School Committee. Sean McDonald was appointed by the Select Board. Brian O'Hare and Terry Hamm are the Finance Committee appointees. Steve Mello was appointed by the Town Moderator. Beth Coghlan is the most recent School Committee appointee. Lara Stone, the most recent Select Board appointee. Gloria Bancroft, also appointed by the Town Moderator. And Christopher O'Neill, who now sits on the Select Board, was actually the Planning Board appointee. So that are the current... Those are the current nine members. The Omnibus Corrections article is actually the article that you received in your packet. This article makes a range of grammatical adjustments to the Town Charter, but it does not impact any policy outlined in the charter. It does not change the intent of the charter, but as you will look through, you will see that there were boards or committees or individuals whose reference was in lowercase letter. We have used the sentence case. We have added punctuation where we felt punctuation. These are all changes that we felt as a committee were important enough to put together what we would call the Omnibus Corrections article. I apologize to you that in the printing of this document, it is difficult to read, and I apologize for that. That's Article 28. The next article that I'll call your attention to is Article 29 and 30. These both deal with elected boards currently that we recommend to be moved to appointed boards. Both the Board of Assessors and the Board of Health are now elected boards. Our rationale is that we would like to have these two boards be appointed boards. That would broaden the base of interested candidates who are not interested in running campaigns. We want people to serve on boards, but we want people with expertise who will help our town move forward to serve on boards. And so we're looking to make those changes, and we've outlined them in Reasons 1, 2, and 3. That is for both Article 29 and 30. The next article, Article 31, is regarding the Director of Public Works. The Board of Public Works is an appointed board. They are the only appointed board in the town who, as it currently states in the charter, appoints the Director of Public Works and affixes their salary, affixes compensation. No other board does that. So this article is looking to change the hiring and compensation of the Department of Public Works Director from the Board of Public Works to the Select Board. The Select Board would still seek input from the Board of Public Works, as it does with every other appointed board, before making a recommendation. And it would also set the compensation rate so that it will be in line with all other director positions. Article 32 and 35. These articles are in relation to two different commissions or boards. One is the Historical Commission. The Historical Commission now sits at nine members. Over the last... Over the course of our last four years discussing this matter, the Historic Commission has had a difficult time seating nine members and coming to a quorum when the nine-member board meets. We are asking to reduce the commission to seven, thus reducing their quorum so that they can meet regularly with a quorum, and the board would be then inconsistent with other elected boards. The Board of Library Trustees. You'll see an asterisk next to the number 6, and I draw your attention below. Mass General Law 78, Section 10, stipulates that a number is divisible by 3. In the town of Dartmouth, we have run a Library Board of Trustees with six members. Again, we are offering to change this to an odd number of members so that it aligns with our other members and to avoid any ties in the future. The next article that we proposed? The Parks and Recreation Board. Article 33. This one is a little bit tricky. In the charter, the charter reads that the board should be elected by seat, meaning when they're running, they would take out papers for their particular seat. But that is not how we have been running their election. This is through no fault of anyone on Parks and Rec, no fault of anyone that we see in the town. It is something that has been in the charter but has not been acted on. We're looking to make sure that the charter replicates the actions of the town, and we feel that on this particular board that it would make sense for it to continue the way that it has, which means anyone, when they have a number of seats available, they would be a pool of candidates. The top vote-getters would get that... Those seats. That is how it has been running, so we're looking to clean that up so that it continues that way. Article 34 is regarding the Select Board. When the Select Board was moved from three to five candidates, during that time, it was also changed that each member of the Select Board would run for their own seat. During many discussions over the course of our time in the Charter Commission, Charter Review, we talked about the benefits of running seat-by-seat elections. seat-by-seat elections and group elections. And it was determined by the members of the Charter Review Committee that we would like all boards and committees to run the same. So during the election, instead of running for an individual seat, we will run as a group seat. And that will, we would hope, broaden interests in running for the board, and allowing people to either not go unopposed, so that others will want to run, and broadening the base of interest in running for the highest town board. Those are the recommendations that the Charter Review Committee has made to the Charter document. You have, in this packet-
And just in the nick of time.
Okay. You have in this document, the Omnibus Charter. You have the current verbiage for every amendment, every article within the Charter, and therefore, every amendment being changed, you can see written in the full Omnibus Corrections article. In this green sheet, it also has on the back page, the rationale for every article from the members of the Charter Review Committee. Thank you.
Okay, so, we're going to start with Article 29, Charter Amendment, I'm sorry, we're going to start with Article 28, because we haven't done that one yet either. Article 28, Charter Amendment Omnibus Corrections. And the person speaking on that is Ms. Stone. I know that you've done an overview, so I'm sure it'll be a brief description.
A little taller. Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Laura Stone, Precinct 8, a town meeting member, but also an appointed member of the Charter Commission, which I was happy to serve on, and to help kick to the finish. So I'll acknowledge all the work that went in far before I, I came on board. So this article, Article 28, is the Charter Amendment to the Omnibus Corrections. As Heidi mentioned, it's purely a housekeeping and Scribner's error in many places punctuation corrections. So I would move to approve Article 28.
Great. Do I have a second? Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends 600.
And Select Board?
Select Board recommends 50.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 28? Are we ready, I'm sorry, right there?
Thank you. Peter Nolton, Precinct 6. I have a question, because it's not grammatical or punctuation within the changes in the Charter. And it begins at the end of Page 11, under Investigations. It starts, the paragraph starts, but it's on Page 12 that I have a question about. And it says, "Nothing in this paragraph shall be construed to require the Select Board to disclose any documentation that is protected by the attorney-client privilege," I get that part, I think, "or to permit or require the Select Board to disclose any documentation that is protected by the attorney-work-product privilege." So I'm assuming that was not in the Charter before. Maybe it was a best practice before, I don't know, because it's not written. But my question is, could you give us an example of what would be considered attorney-work-product privilege? That would be between the attorney and the Select Board, that we would not be privy to?
Let me have Mrs. Savasano speak to that, please.
Sure. For instance, we have a lot of pending litigation, and I will write reports to the Select Board explaining our legal strategies in that pending litigation, or potential or threatened litigation. And if that got out, that could be very damaging to the town. That would be one example. We talk about our legal theories, how we're defending the town in a certain matter. That would be probably the best example of that.
Thank you. Any other questions with regard, any other discussion in the back, please?
Karen MacArthur, Precinct 7. Laura, I appreciate everything, and I actually read all 28 pages. I'm always interested in how people know what's going on. I see that you've redefined the Town Bulletin Board to include the town website. And so I have a question on Page 27, way at the end. It does say that if there's a vacancy, a job opening, that it would be posted on the Town Bulletin Board, or the town website for 10 days. I think you intended to say it would be posted on the Town Bulletin Boards, including the website, because I'm concerned that, I don't have any idea where the Town Bulletin Board is. And if something like that is posted for 10 days, I'm not sure very many people would see it. And I think that, so I'm wondering if there was a specific intention to use and instead of, no, to use or instead of and in the notification for vacancies in our town employees, or boards, or committees?
I'll do my best on this one. There are several places in our Charter that reference things like our bulletin boards, or newspapers versus online publications, where we tried to bring our Charter in line with technology of today. So, we couldn't strike that completely, because for Mass General Law and the establishment of our Charter, there are some antiquated Mass General Law references that are about physically noting and posting things, but we wanted to include and update to include the website, and have it in both places. So does that answer your question?
Hold on one second.
Oh, is there, so you're suggesting-
She's saying it's saying, or, she's suggesting that perhaps it should have been and.
And, the word and versus or on Page 27.
Ms. Brooks would like to-
Yeah. I'm just going to call your attention to Page 3 in the document, where we do talk about, it would be n, Town Bulletin Boards. We added and website. The words Town Bulletin Boards shall mean the bulletin board at the town hall. It reads, "The term is also inclusive of the town of Dartmouth website and town calendar where public information is posted."
So it's a, so it's a defined term, and the defined term includes both the physical posting, as well as the website posting. Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 28? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 28 passes at 11:37. Article 29, Charter Amendment Board of Assessors, I believe Ms. Hamm is going to talk to us about this one.
Terry Hamm, Precinct 4. In an effort to expand involvement, we're always, you saw at the beginning of the meeting, the list of boards and committees that have openings. The Charter Commission thought it would be a good idea to make this board, and I'll do them separately, because they're separate articles, but to make this an appointed board, which would allow somebody, so for example, I'm in the Finance Committee, I didn't have to campaign for this position. I wanted to serve, but I really appreciated being able to be appointed. Doesn't mean that I speak for anybody else. I'm not constrained in what my opinion is, or, you know, how I vote. But it allowed me to participate and be useful. And I think there are people out there who would like to be involved in one of the boards. And we chose the Board of Assessors and the Board of Health as to, to recommend.
Okay, so what we're talking about right now is the Board of Assessors. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you make the motion. And I have a second? Yeah, okay. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends for, two against, and no abstentions. And we do have a minority opinion to present when appropriate.
Okay, thank you. And the Select Board?
Select Board votes 50.
Mr. Govan, you wanted to present the minority opinion?
I'd like to turn it over to Janine to present the minority opinion.
Okay.
Thank you. Janine Simmons. For me, this is a very important issue, and it goes way beyond how it's been presented as such a simple change, to be able to have it be appointed versus be elected. To me, the right to vote and to run for office is at the core of a representative democracy. It is our voice, and we should never give up that right to vote. Our current election process in Dartmouth is not broken. Elections have the benefit of allowing candidates to freely communicate to the public during their campaigns, share information about the values and beliefs that inform their decisions, and hear the concerns of the voters. The independence of our boards is important. Each Board of Assessor candidate should be accountable directly to the voters, not the will, whim, or personal biases we all have, especially of a changing five-member Select Board. The other comment that I want to make is, it was suggested during the presentation that somehow, people that are running for election are not qualified. And I beg to differ with that, and also would like to hear from members of the Board of Assessors on this.
I think they were talking about the being, expanding the pool of qualified candidates. Any other comments? Gentleman right there.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Curtis Nunes, Precinct 6, current board member of the Board of Assessors. In this green paper they handed out, a change would allow the town to seek a larger pool of candidates with experience in the field, who may not want to campaign for the office. Well, that's a shame. What is involved in a campaign? I got 50 friends and family to sign a paper. I sat in the bar, I got a few more people to sign. 50 signatures, you're on the ballot. You want to put up signs, it's a couple hundred dollars. You don't want to put up signs, you don't. I don't see how that's going to bring us more people, if they don't even have the dedication to do what I just said. Do they have the time and the dedication to take 10 classes that you have to take when you get on the Board of Assessors? I don't know if anybody knows that. What we have, experienced people, I'd like to know another board in this town that has over 70 years on this board. My two colleagues, forget me, I just got here four years ago. My two colleagues, 70-plus years on this board, and now, what problems have you found? You haven't had to borrow money since they got on the board. I just don't, I don't understand how that's going to change anything. Is the appointing board member, when he finds somebody on that stage with a property under assessed by several million dollars, are they going to fix that, being appointed by that person? I don't see that happening. One selectman in his campaign speech used the democratic, democratic process as one of the most important things. Five times he's said it in his campaign speech. Is appointing more democratic, our elections? Four generations of my family went to the school system. I think you know the answer to that. And this is what I think you'll get, if you leave it up to these people to appoint this board. I was appointed, very honored to be appointed, to replace one of the biggest positions in this town, the Finance Director when Greg Barnes left. August 8th, the interim and current position holder Gary was appointed on August 8th. August 24th, they harassed my offers for our pick to be on the board. It was me. Resumes came in August 4th, August 23rd, October 25th, November 1st. We had our first meeting in January. Is that how you're going to replace probably the second-most position in town? This is how the town operates. This is why we've lost over 100 people in the last five years that work in the town hall. I think this would be a big mistake for any board. Nobody asked us our opinion. The Planning Board representative on the committee says, "Oh, I had an issue with this. I had to go back to my board and see if they wanted to be elected or appointed." We decided to be elected, so we're off the list. Nobody asked us how we felt. We're not on any, we have no representative on the committee. That's my feeling, people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nunes. In the back, and I'll, I see you, but I'm, I'm still taking people who haven't spoken yet today.
Margaret Sweet, Precinct 9, member of the Planning Board. I agree with Mr. Nunes, and I agree with some of the members of Finance. You cannot take away our rights to vote. You cannot take away and have other people appoint board members. If you want to be a board member, and you work at it, you should be elected. And I'm really upset that the Charter is trying to change this. Going to take away our vote, our right to vote on everything, too? Are we going to stop voting in this town? I urge these people at town meeting to vote no on all of these. Thank you.
Mr. Howland, down front, I see you, I see we have more hands. I will get to you.
Peter Howland, Precinct 1. Everybody that sits in this room is an elected person. Every single person here. And I'm a little ashamed that we have a Charter that three people sitting on a Select Board have recommended to change appointed, from elected positions to appointed positions. And those particular people are going to be the ones appointing the people that they want, or that would be best for the town. I do not agree with the fact that the best candidates that don't want to campaign for the town, or for the position, or for the, for the board. And I'd like to make a motion to indefinitely suspend this article.
Probably indefinitely postpone is probably, okay. So I have a motion before us for indefinite postponement. Do I have a second? I have a second on indefinite postponement. All in favor of indefinite postponement, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please indicate by raising your hand. Guess what? We have a teller count on, on the motion before us for indefinite postponement.
Or it works?
Yes.
Probably should, we, for us, I like, uh, this is indefinitely postponed, and the next time we want to discuss it, it's a temporary.
Is that, isn't-
The gentleman is calling a point of order, and is saying that the next time, for indefinite
postponement, the next time it can be discussed is 10 years.
Where is he getting that?
And that, and that town meeting members should know this. I want to verify the accuracy of that before, before I declare that information. What's your source of that? Is it in our bylaws?
No, it's in the state law, on the board of commissioners, the act committee makes it all.
He's saying it's in the, oh, because of the Charter Review Committee. So his argument is that because the Charter Review, Charter Review Committee happens every 10 years, the next time it can be taken up is during a Charter Review Committee, but it's the-
No, that's not accurate. The Charter requires every 10 years a review. We make Charter Amendments all through the-
Right.
-10 years, including if something new needs to be made, if some strange issue comes up we hadn't previously anticipated. Select Board can anytime recommend a Charter Amendment, subject to town meeting or voter approval.
Thank you. Okay, so I have before us a, a motion for indefinite postponement. It was too close for me to count, so I am going to have the tellers do the count for me.
This is only for this article.
This is only for this article. So Article 29, I have a motion for, this is Article 29 related to the Board of Assessors, and changing it from appointed, from elected to appointed officials. I have a motion before me for indefinite postponement on this article. So I, what I'm going to do is, I'm, we're, I'm going to check, yeah, I'm going to check the, the clickers.
Yeah.
So I'm going to take each section, and we're going to do it row by row, starting right here. If you are in favor of indefinite postponement, not in favor of the article, but rather in favor of indefinite postponement, please raise your hand. Sir, if you are in the back, and you want your vote counted, you need to be sitting in one of these front sections. The gentleman.
The section.
Your vote's not counted there, you need to be sitting down here. Okay, so I'm done with this section here, the middle section. I'm moving the tellers to the middle section. If you are in favor of indefinite postponement, please raise your hand. If you are in favor of indefinite postponement and you are seated in the furthest section, please indicate by raising your hand so the tellers may count you. If you are on stage and in favor of indefinite postponement, please indicate by raising your hand or raising your card, please. That's great, you guys, start over here. Thank you. Well done. The side of the stage as well, please, thank you very much. Thank you. Can you show the clerk? You need to be in on this, please.
(inaudible).
So if you are in this section and you are opposed to indefinite postponement, please raise your hand, raise your card. If you are in the center section and you are opposed to indefinite postponement, please Great. If you're in this section, my far left, you're far right, and you are opposed to indefinite postponement, please raise your hand. Thank you. If you are in this side of the stage and you are in favor of indefinite postponement, please raise your hand. Uh, I'm sorry, opposed, sorry. I've lost track of the count. Okay. And if you are on, I've got no one over here. If you're on this side of the stage and you're, you are opposed to indefinite postponement, please raise your hand. The motion for indefinite postponement fails at 11:54. Okay. Back on the main motion of Article 29. Any further discussion on Article 29 or are we ready to vote? Okay. Gentlemen right here.
Hi, my name is Kevin Santos. I'm not as old as Durup, but maybe close to it. But I've been around, actually, I've been on the Board of Assessors since 1988. And what I'm going to read to you is actually in the archives of the Finance Department. 1987, this town had to borrow 6.8 million dollars. 1988, had to borrow 2.7, approximately 10 million dollars at a rate of 10%. And that's in the archives. You can get an email to you if you want. And the reason is, and it states the reason why, is because the tax bills, real estate tax bills, did not go out for over an additional six months. This town had to borrow money because the tax bills did not go out. And that was not because of the Tax Department, it was because the Board of Assessors had to, they had to get a commitment from the Department of Revenue. The Board of Assessors comes under the preview of not only the voters, but the Department of Revenue. That's why my colleague over there, Curtis, was saying we have to take all these courses. You know, at that time, in 1988, I'd just received an accounting degree, and I figured I want to help out the town. I've been in the town all my life, and I could probably put my, some of my education to helping the town out. I ran, and I ran on the promise that as long as I was an assessor, that would never happen again. And I'm still an assessor in the town of Dartmouth. It has not happened again. Even though our board has gone, I mean, not a board, but I should say our staff has gone from personnel of five to down to two, we still managed to survive. And the reason is because when I first started, along with my colleague Bob, he ran at the same time, we actually went into that office and ran it for six months. And if anything happens in the future within our department, I can still get in there and run it. And so can Bob. So the backup is, I'm not an appointed, I answer to the voters. I promised the voters that would never happen again. And actually, the 10 million dollars, approximately 10, that was borrowed back then, is equivalent today a purchasing power of 27 million dollars. Can you imagine if this town had to go up, borrow 27 million dollars? And two years after I was an assessor, I was on the Board of Selectmen, and the first week I was on the board, I had...
Mr. Santos on this question.
I had, I had, well, I had the school committee come and ask me...
On the question. We're winding a little. We're talking about whether it's appointed or we're on the assessors, please.
Well, I just want to say that there's, there's, when I read the article, it said probably about five different tasks. There's more than five. There's like 20 different tasks that the Board of Assessors has to do. On a monthly basis, there's so many deadlines we have to meet. And just to have someone appointed that doesn't even know what they're getting into is absurd.
Thank you. And can I remind people, this section down front is for town meeting members only. If you're not a town meeting member, I'd ask you to sit in the back. If you're in the back and you're a town meeting member and you want your vote counted, you need to be in the front sections, please. Over there, please. One second, please, let me get you a microphone, Mrs. Gilbert. Ms. Gilbert.
I'm Diane Gilbert. I'm with Precinct 8. I won't say any more than, "Vote this down." It is not good for democracy, it's not good for this town, and at the risk of being out of order, vote the second article down too. Thank you.
Thank you, we're staying focused. On the, on the end there, please. Just pass the mic down, that would be fine.
Jane Zimmerman, Precinct 9. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'd like to move the question.
Do I, so I have a move the question in front of us. All in favor of moving the question, please indicate by raising your hand. If you are opposed to moving the question and want to continue to discuss this, please raise your hand. The motion to move the question passes at 11:59. Okay, so we are back on the main motion, Article 29, Charter Amendment, Board of Assessors. If you are in favor of Article, of the Charter Amendment, Board of Assessors, if you are in favor of that, please indicate by raising your hand. This requires a two-thirds vote. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of Article 29. Please raise your hand if you're opposed to Article 29. Article 29 fails at 12:00 PM. Article 30. Charter Amendment, Board of Health. And, let me see, who's going to be speaking? Ms. Ham. Thank you.
So this is a similar recommendation. I can assure you that the people who worked on the Charter Commission made these recommendations in the interest of the town, not with any hidden agendas. I understand that people disagree with the recommendation, but they were made to try to open up the opportunities to people who wanted to serve, who did not want to campaign, not because they're lazy, but because they did not want to campaign, but they would like to be useful. And that was the recommendation, that was the reason made. So this is for the Board of Health, and it, it's the same recommendation, to move it simply from elected to appointed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Thank you. And a second? Yep. Great. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance recommends 4 to 2.
Select Board recommendation.
Select Board recommends 5 to 0.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 30? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of Article 30, please raise your hand. I need a two-thirds on this one. I'm sorry. Did you, you wanted to speak? Sure. I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Yes, let me get you a microphone, please, okay? He's right behind you. Thank you.
Madam Moderator, I'd like to pass the mic to the current Chair of the Board of Health, who is not a town meeting member.
So she can ask to be recognized even though she's not a town meeting member? I, I, you cannot, you can't, you can't pass your time. So if she'd like to be recognized, she can certainly raise her hand and ask to be recog- okay. Thank you.
Can I use, can I use my...
You may use your time to speak? Yes.
I recommend that...
Could you give me your name and precinct number, please?
I'm sorry, Brian Thomas, Precinct 4.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
I am recommending that we vote against this because it is the American way to have the vote.
Thank you. Ms. Keith, you would like to speak? Yes, I, you may.
Hi, my name is Michelle Keith. I am your current elected Chair of the Board of Health of the town of Dartmouth. Thank you very much for electing me. It has been an honor to serve in this capacity. I'd like to thank the Charter Committee for their four years of hard work. I'd like to thank you guys for voting for me. And most of all, I would like to thank our Board of Health, Chris Michaud, and his entire team for their phenomenal work on behalf of the town, fighting the Title V additional regulations and costs for us. And this is an example of why it's so important to have your Board of Health, you know, directly have to report to the people and have to ask for your vote. The expertise within our actual Department of Health, our Public Department of Health, is outstanding. The Board of Health frequently will look to that department for expertise when the expertise is not on the board itself. But I, I really encourage you to keep this as an elective position, especially considering everything that we've been through with COVID and how important public health issues are and how important your voice counts in those decisions. So once again, it's been an honor to serve. Please consider this to continue to be an elective position. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote on this or do we have more discussion? Ready to vote. All in favor of Article 30 Charter Amendment for the Board of Health, please indicate by raising your hand. If you, this requires a two-thirds vote. If you are opposed to Article 30 Charter Amendment, Board of Health, please raise your hand. Article 30 fails at 12:04. Article 31, Director of Public Works. Yes.
How can the Select Board vote 5 to 0 and then want select to make particular votes?
I think people are allowed to change their mind like they might be here if they're persuaded by something they hear. Thank you. Okay, so Board of Charter Amendment, Article 31 Charter Amendment, Director of Public Works, Ms. Bancroft.
Hi, my name's Gloria Bancroft, town meeting member, Precinct 1, and I was asked to join the Charter Review Committee this past December. Article 31 pertains to the Director of Public Works. When we reviewed Section 4 of the Town Charter, which governs Select Board appointments, we discovered that the Board of Public Works was the only appointed board in which they had the authority to hire and set compensation. So we tried to figure out why that is, and when we did our research, we did find that the language was in fact included in Massachusetts General Law. But also during this review process, we also were, were told and confirmed with Town Council that Town Charter can supersede Massachusetts General Law, because we as a municipality, all municipalities have the right to determine how we want our town government to operate. So I just want to point out that this recommendation does not affect the operations of the Department of Public Works or the responsibilities and duty of the Director or the board itself. This was simply to make all appointed boards consistent and to allow for, and to not allow the actual hiring and compensation to be set by the board. So we ask that you vote in favor of this article.
And so I'm assuming you're making the motion?
Yes, I am.
And I have a second? Thank you. And Finance Committee recommendation for this?
Finance Committee recommends 6 to 0.
Okay. And the Select Board recommendation?
Recommended 4 to 1.
Thank you. Was there any discussion on Article 31? Right, let me get you a microphone, Mr. Dabney, please, because I want everyone to be able
Fred Dabney, Precinct 5. I totally support the efforts of the Charter Commission. I think they put in an enormous amount of time, and it certainly is greatly appreciated by all of us, when we know the experience of that group has been an enormous benefit to this town for many years. However, in this particular case, the Board of Public Works has a unique position in terms of its number of issues that it impacts. Almost every town board is affected by what happens by the Department of Public Works. And the expertise, the knowledge, and experience of that board is exceptionally important to this town. Right now, we have an extraordinary effective Board of Public Works. They do an amazing job and they have an amazing amount of experience. And for that not to be allowed to select the Director of Public Works, to me, would be a significant mistake because that position is so important, and I would urge you to vote this down.
Thank you. On the aisle, please, up there? Ms. Miller, up, up the aisle, please, thank you.
Lori Ann Miller, Precinct 9. I was a little disappointed in this particular article, not because I'm in favor of it or against it, but I think what the Board of, the Charter Commission should have looked at was how the Planning Board handles this. It's a five-member board, and the Selectmen are a five-member board, and how, when a new director is hired for the Planning Department, it is a combination of both boards who vote on this. So the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen review everything and vote on it. It's not just one board. And it has worked very, very effectively. What happens is we form a committee of three, two on the Planning Board, one on the Board of Selectmen. We review all the applications, we interview all the applicants, we then bring three of those applicants before the combination of both boards, and a candidate is selected. The finance part of it is handled by the Board of Selectmen, and I don't have a problem with that. But I do have a problem with our boards, whether they are appointed or non-appointed, or elected or non-elected, don't have a say and a vote say in who is going to be the Director of that department. Those boards know who they want, educationally wise, they know who they see is coming before them with their applications and interviews, who they think would be the best fit- them with their applications and interviews, who they think would be the best fit for the town. The Board of Selectmen understand their Department, but they don't understand 100% the working of the other Departments in this town. Those Boards understand that, and this really should have come before us as a combination of all the Boards working with the Board of Selectmen to appoint new Directors.
Thank you. Any further, this gentleman in the back?
Noah Souza, Precinct 1. I guess my main question would be, if the Board would not be able to choose who to hire, but they're still going to oversee that person, would they, would the Board overseeing them have the ability to remove them if they don't like the job being done? It kind of seems counterintuitive to have them not be able to select who they oversee, but then not really have the ability to oversee them.
Mrs. Bancroft.
So just, just to clarify again, that this is an appointed Board, and while I respect the comment about having elected and appointed Boards that we just heard, again, this is an appointed Board, so we have to keep in mind that the appointed body, or the appointed body, is the Select Board, right? So it would be important to keep, unlike voters who elect their Boards, this is the Select Board who would be appointing this particular, in this particular position. So what I said earlier was that this would not affect operations, and this would not affect the responsibilities of the Board. So if the Board, in fact, wanted, were evaluating in their process and wanted to remove the individual, that would still be, as far as I understand, would still be their authority to do so. It's just the hiring and setting of compensation that we are asking that you would change.
I'm just asking for a little bit of clarification, because I want to make sure that I'm giving, that we're getting, I'm sure you're right, but let me just clarify. So I just checked with town council. If the Select Board is the, is the person that appoints the Director, the Select Board would also be the person that would have to remove the Director, and I don't, and according to Mr. Savistano, the DPW Board would not have ability to hire or remove someone from that position. Okay. Thank you.
Just some comments and a question. I'm a bit concerned that the DPW Board, who has the closest relationship with the Director, they're meeting with that person monthly, they're dictating policy and how the, the operations work, that they don't have a say in the hiring or firing of the Director. And I would like to know, you know, Laurie Miller is absolutely right with the process with the Planning Board and Select Board. I've been through that process, and it's a joint appointment. Did the Charter Commission consider a joint appointment, and if they did, why did they not appoint? And one more comment, that if the Charter Commission had a problem that, or if there's been a problem in the past, I don't know of one, regarding the Director of Public Works, that they had it to be removed, that there was a rift between the Select Board and the DPW Commission, if the DPW Commission is making wrong decisions, such as appointing or not firing a Director when it's appropriate to fire, then you don't reappoint the policymakers. The Selectmen have ultimate control of who they put in that seat if they're making bad decisions when it comes to hiring, firing, and setting compensation. So to leave them out of the process entirely, whether they, they have the closest relationship, I think is a bit of a mistake.
So I, I'm not going to let it go too far as to what the discussions were. If somebody on the Charter Committee wants to address that, that's fine, but it's not, it's not terribly relevant to what we've got before us. We have, we have a warrant article. If you want to provide a rationale, that's fine. I'm not there yet, please, go ahead.
So to answer your question, yes, we did discuss that, and best practices and best management practices would be that, of course, the Board would be included, no different than we heard with the elected Boards, that it's joint with the Select Board and that particular Board. In this particular case with the appointed, it would, we would, that would still be the best practices, is to include that Board, because of course, they're going to be working with them and evaluating them.
So, so Mr. Souza's highlighting that the language is, it doesn't make it a requirement. Any further, on the aisle here, please.
Mark O'More, Precinct 8. I was just wondering if we could hear the minority opinion from the Select Board, since it wasn't a unanimous.
Would the person who provided, yes, who was against this want to like to speak on it?
Thank you. In a regular situation, I would agree that, to be consistent, I think it would be a good idea to make the appointments similar to the other, the others, and not get, excuse me, and give the authority with the Select Board. The DPW is our second-largest committee department in town. It's in a critical stage right now, because we have some giant projects starting, going, and going forward. They're critical. We have a superbly engaged Chair, Board, experienced, three gentlemen who are experienced, who understand with great technical ability. In a vacuum, I would say we should, we should approve this article. They have also promised, and I, that, that in the fall, they, it's a committee and a relationship that needs a lot of, a lot of refinement and changes, and they promised to come to us in the fall with those changes. And one of them may be this, this particular change that we're talking about for this article. It may not be. I think there's a opportunity for some real diagnosis and overhaul of the relationship between the town and the Select Board, and how the DPW works. There's a lot of alternatives around this state of how DPW works and relates, and I think it's that important to review it all, and they've agreed to do the homework and come back to us. And I look forward to working with them to do the same, because I think that overhaul is important. And I would say that the reason why I voted against it is because I think the time to do it is as a total package, which may, which will include the relationship between the Select Board and the, the Town Administrator and the DPW Board, and the Director of the DPW, and that's why I voted against it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just trying, any? Yes.
Yeah, Melissa, Bob Garvin, Precinct 9. I voted for this mainly because of the compensation part of it. You have a appointed, three-person Board deciding what the compensation is, and I feel that it was more important for the Select Board to do that, since they're elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean McDonald, Chairman of the Select Board. It is the intent of the Select Board that when the Department Head position becomes available, that the Select Board and the Department that runs that Department Head would be in discussions as to interviewing and hiring the particular Department Head. This is no different. We did it with the Planning Board, we did it with several other Boards. It is our intent also to do this. You ask the Select Board to negotiate and hire the Department Heads to run the town. This is the only Department Head position in town that the Select Board is not involved with, other than, oh, sorry, other than the School Department. Okay? So all we're asking, this is, does not change the operation of the DPW. Even if the DPW comes to us in the, in the fall with operational changes, this is still in the Charter. This still needs to be voted on by the voters of this town to make this change. So what you're doing here in any with, with any of these articles, is not so much endorsing the article, you're saying, yes, we want this to go forward, to let the voters in April vote on this change. That's what this does. So this has nothing to do with endorsing it, whether you like it or not. You're allowing the voters to vote this in April. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman right here?
Hi, Kevin Murphy, Precinct 8. I noticed we have the Chairman of the DPW Board present here, and I'm just wondering if he'd like to make any comments, since we don't seem to have any, any input from, from the members of the Board.
Sure. I will offer Mr. Almy the opportunity to make a comment if he would like.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, if you want to elect me.
Could you please state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, my name is Robert Almy. I live in Precinct 9.
Thank you.
I've been here all morning. I would gladly stand for election, if that's what you guys want. Right now, I'm appointed. I have 50 years in public service with various kinds of water agencies and planning departments, and I've had a number of management courses, and I used to teach at the University of California as a second job. Our Board unanimously sent a memorandum to the Select Board and to the Commission, I mean, I'm sorry, the Committee. I won't go through the whole thing, but there are three points that I think are important. First, removing the current authority of the Board of Public Works to hire the Public Works Director would separate the Board's authority over the Director of Public Works from responsibility to the Department. That's separating authority and responsibility, which is a management no-no, except under very narrow circumstances. There's no pressing need to take any action right now. The town is seeking a new Town Administrator, and we believe that that new Administrator should have input into any changes that are made. And third, you voted earlier to give us the funding to evaluate the process of the Department and have a report to discuss with the Select Board and the Charter Review Committee at the end of the summer. We think that that's the time to discuss whatever changes would be best for delivering services to the residents of Dartmouth. I request, as did our Board unanimously, that this item be deferred or otherwise delayed.
Thank you, Mr. Almy. Mr. Souza.
Thank you. So I've heard twice today that the intent was to have the Commission have a say, but that's not what we're voting on today. There's no language that allows that to happen in, in the Charter revision. That's a bit concerning to me now. I believe, Mr. McDonald and the Select Board, that they're, that is their intent. We currently have a young man that's serving as a Director, and hoping he's there for years to come. Given that, we do know what's, there'll be changes to the Select Board years to come. And the Charter is, is what governs them. So 10, 15 years down the road, they're looking at appointing a new Director? The Charter tells them they have the authority, not the DPW. So if the intent is there, let's get the language in there, let's do this right. So I would move to indefinitely postpone this, and hopefully we can take this up at a later town meeting.
Gosh, we love, we love an indefinite postponement today. Okay, so a motion before us for indefinite postponement. All in favor of indefinite postponement, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The motion to indefinitely postpone carries at 12:23. 12, 12:23? Mr. McDonald asked for clarification. Article 32 Charter Amendment Regarding Historical Commission. Ms. Coughlin.
Hi there, my name is Beth Coughlin, Precinct 4, and appointee to the Charter Review Committee from the School Committee. So Article 32 would reduce the number of the appointed members of the Historical Commission from nine to seven. This change was requested from the Commission due to their inability to get members to get quorum. So we are asking that you vote to approve the change of the Dartmouth Historic Commission from nine to seven. We asked, I ask that you move that the town meeting approve this.
So I have a motion and a second? Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends 6 to 0.
And Select Board Recommendation?
Select Board recommends 5 to 0.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
I just have one question about, could you put that screen back? It was about what was on the screen. The, about going from six to five, MGL.
No, not, not, that's out of order. I'm going to take that up. We're on Article 32. That's Article 35, okay? So we're sticking with Article 32. So to be clear, this is a Charter Amendment regarding Dartmouth Historical Commission. And what I understand is the Historical Commission was in favor of it because they were not able to get enough volunteers, so.
Hi, this is Lauren Helly, Precinct 5. I just wanted to know, it seems like you want to go from nine to seven, because you can't get enough people that I think you're appointing to this Board, but I want to know what is the process of informing the townspeople that you have openings on this Board, and just curious what the age of the youngest person on your Board is?
So I'm not sure that we know the ages of the people on the Board, that, nor that we need to share them. But what is the process by which the openings are advertised? The Select Board is in charge, Mr. McGinnis?
If you go to the town's website, there's a page just dedicated to Committee and Board openings, and applicants can submit letters of interest right through the website, and the forms get submitted to the Select Board's office for their consideration.
Thank you.
We don't ask the age.
Thank you. And on, over there, please?
Thank you. Judy Lund, Precinct 8, and Chairman for a long time of the Historical Commission. There was a time, a long way back, when we had seven members. The state mandates seven members. There were some personal reasons that the Board was extended for a period of time. I see no reason to extend beyond the state standard, which is seven members. It worked very well for a lot of years.
Thank you. Any further discussion, or are we ready to vote? All right, we're ready to vote. All in favor of Article 2, the Charter Amendment reducing the Historical Commission from nine to seven members? This requires two-thirds. Fantastic. All opposed. The motion, Article passes at 12:27. Article 33 Charter Amendment Parks and Rec Board. And Ms. Stone?
Hi, everyone. So I'll just reference Select Woman Heidi Sylvia Brooks' comments earlier. Article 33 takes what currently happens in practice, but somehow didn't get caught for several years in terms of folks being elected to Parks and Rec. So right now, what we do is practice in the Town of Dartmouth, is the top vote-getters are elected to the Parks and Recreation Department. What the Charter had outlined that we didn't catch is it was running for a seat. So we want to move the Charter in line with what current practice is, and have top vote-getters be elected to the Parks and Recreation Board, and so I would ask that you approve Article 33.
So I have a motion and a second? Thank you. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends 6 to 0.
And the Select Board Recommendation?
Select Board recommends 5 to 0.
Okay, this requires two-thirds for passage as well. Any discussion on this warrant article? Are we ready to vote? I'm sorry. Do you want to vote, or do you, or? Okay. Sorry, sometimes it's not clear when I'm going to a vote if you're trying to comment or if you're just enthusiastic. I'm not being fresh, I'm just.
Pete Howen, Precinct 1. So I guess my concern with this is, is you may feel, as a member of the town, that you don't feel a particular candidate is doing a good job, and you want to run for that particular seat because you feel that maybe the other candidate is doing a good job. And I think, again, that this takes away that ability for us to kind of decide who we really are voting for. And again, I think this will come up at a later amendment as well, but I, I have concerns that if we take that away, again, where, as people, as voters, we're losing that opportunity in that democracy that I want that job. I don't think that person is doing a good job. And I think that it's not a popularity contest. And I think that it's not a popularity contest, and I think that you...if you decide you want to run for a position, I think you have or should have the availability to choose what position you're running for. I don't think it should be, you know, top-five win or top-two win, or I think a lot of people go into the campaign thinking that they want to replace somebody particularly, and I think that this takes that away from the people that want to enter, and it may limit the people that want to campaign, which I think is, from what we've heard from the Charter, is a concern for the Charter. So, just want to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Hello? There we go. So, what you said, if...back in 2010, when we had another Charter review, the other Charter Committee had intended and originally prepared a warrant article to move in your direction that you're stating for all the Boards. They eventually backed off that, but when they combined the Parks and Recreation to one Board, they did want to have it for individual seats, and that's why this article was drafted that way. And I did confirm that with the Chairman of the Charter Committee back in 2010 as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Do you have a follow-up comment?
So just to rebuttal that, for clarification, this Charter is currently going against what the Charter of 2010's recommendations were?
No, the Charter of 2010, when they combined the Boards, they created the Parks and Recs Board, they had individual seats. Somehow, that never was passed down to the then-town clerk, so they continued the elections the way they had been doing all the other elections. It was supposed to have been done the way the Select Board elections are done, individual seats. That was their intent in 2010, and I confirmed that with them as well.
Okay. So, anything else on this? Are we ready to vote? Do you want to speak? Okay.
I'd just like to...oh, sorry. Scott Dolaner, Precinct 2.
Thank you.
Would just like to comment that I feel the proposed way of these elections going forward is more in the vein of electing the people we want elected to the Board rather than voting against people from being elected to a Board.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Are we ready to go? Okay. All in favor of the Amendment...Charter Amendment, Parks and Rec Board, Article 33. All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Article 33 passes at 12:33. Article 34, Charter Amendment, Select Board. Ms. Stone?
So, this article is, you know, in the discussion that just happened, I'll just reference that in this case, the Charter Commission reviewed and went back and forth about this, but currently, your Select Board is elected by seat, and we felt in keeping with best practice across the state, we reviewed and had comment from a consultant that came and worked with the Charter Commission that we wanted to move, as the gentleman just referenced, to elected top vote-getters, like elect some...elect people for these positions. As a former Select Woman, I can tell you that this is definitely a hard thing to part with, my colleagues on the Board. We've done it a long time in the town of Dartmouth, the way that we have currently done it. And again, I'll reference Chairman McDonald's phrase. This is...you may have an opinion about this, but I think what we, as a Charter Commission, want to make sure is that the voters have the opportunity to vote on this. So if we want to make a change like this for our elected body, for the Select Board, do you want the voters to have the opportunity to weigh in on it? And if we move this forward for the April election, it will be a ballot question, and folks will have the opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you. So, she's making the motion, and I have a second? Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Finance Committee recommends five in favor, one against, and when appropriate, we have a minority opinion.
Okay. And Select Board recommendation?
Select Board voted four to one to recommend.
Thank you. Any discussion on this article? Do you want to read the minority opinion, Mr. Galvin, or provide an opportunity for the person who is in the minority to provide their opinion, please?
Janine Simmons, Finance Committee. I'm naturally suspicious when we once again try to change the election process. You know, our current election process isn't broken. When we have opposing candidates per seat, we know who is running against whom in the actual distinctions between the candidates on the issues. Selection by the highest number of votes received for any open seat reduces the clarity of differences on town issues and forces voters to choose from a potentially larger pool of candidates, diluting the overall vote count. In an election, if there were more than two candidates, it may result in the election of a candidate who has received only a minority of the votes cast. For example, in a closely contested election, that maybe we have four candidates, the total required to win could be as little as 25% of the total vote plus one.
Before we move forward, I just want to highlight, there was a...as printed in your packet, there is a Scrivener error, and Mr. Souza was going to tell us what that is.
So the first reference to 3-5A should be 7-5C, so we would need a motion to amend that would move the first reference to subsection 3-5A be stricken and replaced with subsection 7-5C.
So let me take that motion, because I want this...so when we vote on it, I want it to be the correct wording. So I'm assuming, Ms. Stone, that you would make that motion to correct the Scrivener error?
Absolutely. I would move that you...
As Mr. Souza...
As Town Council has indicated.
And do I have a second on that? Thank you. All right. All in favor of correcting just the Scrivener error, we're not voting on the main motion. Please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. Okay. The motion as corrected is now what we are discussing. So any further discussion? Ms. Miller, on this motion before us. And the motion to correct passed at 12:37.
The way we vote now for the Board of Selectmen is there are two selectmen that run by themselves and two selectmen that run with other...two and two and one, right? So that gives the person who's running alone a little bit better chance of winning, but that's not...that's very confusing. But if you have one...two selectmen running, and the top two are going to get the seat, and you have five selectmen running, five people running for that position, how many of you are going to vote just for one person because that's the person you want to get in? You're going to slam dunk, and I'm not sure that's a good way of voting.
Thank you. Anyone else on this article that's before us? In the back, please.
Once again, Margaret Sweet, Precinct 9, a member of the Planning Board. We vote for the individual people in this town that we want to run this town, and we cannot change that. This is...I can't believe it. We vote for the people we want, not the highest number of votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, or are we sending it to a vote? All right. All in favor of Article 34 as amended for the Scrivener error, please indicate by raising your hand. This requires two-thirds. All opposed to Article 34 as amended...that looks a little close. All right, we're going to a telecount for Article 34, please. Okay, so for this section here, if you are in favor of Article 34 as amended for the Scrivener error, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, if you are in the center section, and you are in favor of Article 34 as amended for the...to repair the Scrivener error, please indicate by raising your hand. If you are in the far section over here, and you are in favor of Article 34 as amended for the Scrivener error, please indicate by raising your hand. Kelly Thompson, please. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I also need anyone on this stage who is in favor of Article 34 as amended for the Scrivener error, please indicate by raising your hand on this side of the stage. If you're on this side of the stage and you're in favor of passage of Article 34 as amended for the Scrivener error, please indicate by raising your hand. I need you to look at these numbers for me for the... Thank you very much. If you're in this section and you are opposed to Article 34 as amended, please indicate If you're in the center section and you are opposed to Article 34 as amended, please If you're in the far section and you are opposed to Article 34 as amended, please indicate Okay, if you are on this section of the stage and you are opposed to Article 34 as amended, please indicate by raising your hand. If you're on this section of the stage and you're opposed to Article 34 as amended, please Okay. Article 34 fails at 12:44. Required two-thirds for passage, and I don't even have a majority. So 12:44, Article 34 fails. Article 35. Okay, so before we go to Article 35, we're getting close to 1 o'clock. My inclination is to grind through and do Article 35 and the budget, but I will defer to you as a body if you want a break for lunch. Anybody in favor of just grinding through, please raise your hand. Fantastic. We're going to do Article 35, and then I'm going to go back to Article 13. Article 35, Charter Amendment, Library Board of Trustees. Ms. Bancroft?
Okay, I'll try this one. So this Article 35 pertains to the Board of Library Trustees. When we reviewed Article 3 in the Charter, we discovered that the Library Board of Trustees was comprised of six members. So, we found that a little striking because all other Boards are an odd number. So our greatest concern here was that if they were potential tie votes in the future, that then decisions couldn't be made. And for those of you who follow the Select Board closely, we had that situation most recently when there were only four members due to illness, and then they were tied votes. So we wanted to be able to prevent that. Although, you know, the library assured us there had been no issues, and this is nothing against the library at all, we think the members are doing a wonderful job, it was really just because of concerns for the future regarding tie votes. It was brought to our attention that the number six was chosen because Massachusetts General Law stipulates that the number needs to be divisible by three. So that would either be three, six, or nine. So we considered that. If we reduced it to three, then that would be reducing the Board in half, so we didn't think that was appropriate. Bringing it up to nine kind of gave us the concern that, you know, that would be a larger number of people that would have to step forward. So we felt that five was an appropriate number and would be consistent with other elected groups. So, in addition to that, we also found that the library commissioners have a handbook for trustees, and in there also stipulates the divisible by three, however, unless it's overridden by the town charter. So we felt that also gave us permission, so to speak, to proceed in this way. So I make...I would ask that you support this article.
So I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Second. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends 6-0-0.
And the Select Board recommendation?
Hold on, he's going to refer to my notes here. Select Board voted 5-0.
Thank you. Any discussion on this article? And Mr. Nunes, you would want to make a point, so I would...I stopped you because it wasn't with regard to the...
Curtis Nunes, Precinct 6. My only question is, can we oversee MGL Chapter 78 and not follow that we have to be divisible by three?
Yeah, so I think that what I heard is that our Charter can override Mass. General Law in this instance. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. Any further...on the aisle there, please?
Thank you. Joan Menard, Precinct 9. First off, I too want to thank the Charter Review Committee. I know how much work went into this whole process. I'm voting no on Article 35. I am a library trustee. In addition to wanting to comply with the state law, I'm concerned that five trustees will actually be too few to effectively oversee the finances and physical plant, advocate for library resources, and continuously adjust to patron needs, technology, and financial constraints. The Dartmouth Library Board is not an advisory board. We are an active governing board, and we need all six members to do the work we were elected to do. Further, we follow a standard of nonprofit board process to handle tie votes. Those happen very infrequently, if ever, but the chair votes last, and if that vote creates a tie, the motion fails. So we have that kind of under control. The Library Board was very surprised to see this article on the warrant, and we want you...and wanted you to know that they wish to remain at six trustees. As an aside, during the Charter Review Committee's discovery on this on May 23, they found a Massachusetts town that recently changed their Charter to go from seven trustees to six to align with the law. Thank you. I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. The gentleman right here, please.
Jim Griffith, Precinct 2. I'm just curious about what problem we're trying to fix. When the current library trustees meet, are there a lot of knock-down, drag-out fights that...I mean, what are we trying to...I don't get the point of this at all.
Mrs. Bancroft?
Well, it was strictly for...to prevent anything from happening...
Well, it was strictly for, to prevent anything from happening. We can never predict the future, so while there may not have any knockout fights today or in the past, you just don't know what the future may, may hold. Again, there was no ill feelings here, there was no ill intent, and we have nothing but good things to say about the trustees. This was more to be in line with the charter and consistency with others. And the beauty of this is, it's a recommendation and you can decide.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons?
Janine Simmons, Precinct 8. I am the liaison from the Finance Committee for the Library Board of Trustees, and first of all, I can tell you, I've probably been that liaison for at least three years, if not more. I can honestly say there has never been a knock-down, drag-out fight. Or even an argument, really. But what I did want to also say is, I've never seen there be a tie vote in all those years. And what disturbed me also about this was the fact that there was no collaboration on this article with the actual library board. I found that very disturbing, that they weren't brought into the discussion before it showed up on the town warrant.
Thank you. Any further discussion, or Mr. Howland?
So, Peter Howland, just Precinct 1. So I'm just, after sitting through all of this as a town meeting member, I'm just a little surprised that, you know, we're being told that this is a preventative thing when we literally just heard that there is a system in place that's, that wouldn't allow what you want to prevent regardless. And after seeing six or seven of the votes that the charter is presented with us fail, I'm just wondering why are we trying to, again, change things and put things in place when there's already fail safes, and we're being told it's to prevent that, but we don't need anything to prevent that? So I just, I'm just, you know, I'm a little kind of perturbed, quite frankly, that this is what we've spent all morning on in the charter recommendations. Again, everybody does good work, and I'm happy about that, but it seems like all of this that we've been presented with isn't in the best interest, or it's not panning out what it's supposed to be for preventative reasons, when that can't even happen to begin with. So that's all that I have about.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're ready to vote, it sounds like. Do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just, this process was, again, long. You heard that it took four years, and there was a lot of thought that went into it, and you may not agree with some of that, and I respect that. Everyone has a voice, that's the beauty of this town government. But I love the enthusiasm, and I would really hope that for 2030, when that review comes up, that many of you decide to volunteer, I really do.
We also have bylaw review committees, so those are other opportunities for people to volunteer, because I appreciate that you acknowledge that there was some, a lot of time and effort that was put into this, whether or not we agree with this as a group. And there are plenty of volunteer opportunities for you to have your voice heard at an earlier point in the process. With that, let's get forward on, that's my public service address for today, let's get forward with this article. It sounds like we're ready to vote. So all in favor of the Charter Amendment, Library Board of Trustees, please indicate by raising your hand, and this is a two-thirds. If you are opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, Article 35 fails at 12:53. Okay, so we're moving on now to Article 13. It is a separate bat, yes, yes. Yes, I, how about if we adjourn for five minutes? I appreciate that gift of time. So five minutes, we'll do a five-minute adjourning, and we will reconvene back here at 1 o'clock, okay? So if you need to stretch your legs or. I know we all needed a short break there. I don't even need the mic, apparently. We're going to call this meeting back to order. We are working right now on Article 13. It's our budget, it's a separate packet within your town meeting mailing. It says Town of Dartmouth Fiscal Year 2025 Budget on the cover, for those playing along at home. Okay, we are going to go to, so there are a number of pages, but, but a couple pages in, they start to be numbered, so we're going to go to page one. Okay, so it's about three, three sheets in. What I'm going to do is what is, handle this, for those who are seasoned town meeting members, you're going to recognize this, for those who are new, let me tell you what we're going to do. I'm going to read the, I'm going to go to the totals of every category, I'm going to read the total. If you have a question about that section of the budget, you're going to call a hold. At the end, I'm going to go back and we're going to clear the holds, okay? And as we stated early on, any increase, it needs to have an offsetting decrease within the budget. Okay, so let's get started. Town meeting, $3,700. Moderator, zero. Select Board Town Administrator, $639,113. Town Accountant, $176,107. Next page. Assessors, $352,838. Director of Budget and Finance Treasurer, $577,808. Town Collector, $389,003. Legal, $477,410. Human Resources Department, $197,971. Next page. Management Information Systems, $782,683. Town Clerk, $297,910. Election and Registration, $147,000. Conservation Commission, $157,648. Planning Board, $188,199. Next page. Board of Appeals, $73,243. Community Development Department, zero. Facility and Vehicle Maintenance Town Hall and Other Buildings, $652,787. Hold? Did I hear a hold?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Vacant Building Maintenance, zero. Solar Net Metering Credits, $135,000. Communications, $76,000. Ambulance Contract, zero. Building Department, $608,159. Sealer of Waits and Measures, $11,515. Next page. Emergency Management Agency, $26,500. Animal Control, $192,230. Twenty, Natural Resources, $24,622, for a total in Public Safety of $9,361,361,910. Schools, Dartmouth Public Schools, $35,156,839.
You want to say that again? You said 33.
53.
You said 35.
Well, this is what you pay for when you get zero under moderator. Apparently I flip the numbers sometimes. Sorry about that. Thank you for highlighting it.
I did get that hold?
I did get the hold, thank you also for highlighting that. $6,100,000 for Greater New Bedford Vocational Technical High School. Bristol County Agricultural High School, $210,000. Department of Public Works Salaries, $3,221,875. Department of Public Works Expenses, $912,021. Street Lights, $65,000. Traffic Lights, $8,000. Regional Refuge Management District Assessment, zero. Board of Health, $444,847. Council on Aging, $418,409. Youth Commission, $88,103. Veterans Department, $659,859. Next page. Libraries, $1,312,852. Recreation Department, zero. Park Commission, $521,194. Historical Commission, $250. Maturing Debt, $1,577,000. Interest on Debt, $779,532. Next page. Employee Benefits, Pensions and Retirements, $6,748,832. Workers' Compensation, $355,000. Unemployment Compensation, $78,500. Health and Life Insurance, $9,249,847. Medicare Payroll Tax, $850,000. Police Medical Disability, $225,000. Other employee benefits, benefits. Other Employee Benefits, 196,587. Property and Liability Insurance, $1277,628. For a grand total of this budget of $103,653,491. So now we're going to go back and clear the holds. My first hold, my first hold was on Select Board and Town Administrator. Call the hold, Thank you.
Kathy Del Sordo, Precinct Five. In reviewing the section on Town Administrator and Administrative Services, it appears that we've gone up very significantly over the cycle of the four-year period here. Almost 66% when I did the percentages. Could we have an explanation as to why all of a sudden we need this large overhead administratively?
Go ahead.
I think you may recall from last town meeting, what we've done is we've consolidated positions in departments. So Community Development, I think you saw there's a zero line item. That has been combined into the Town Administrator's budget. So there's really been no large increase that you're stating. It's more just moving salaries from other budgets into the Town Administrator budget to be more in line with how the town is organized.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other holds with regard to this? Okay, we're clearing that hold then. The next hold I had was on the, on the, on the Select Board Town Administrator. Sure.
Andrea Langhauser, Precinct Seven. I just noted that the Town Administrator's Office has a GIS salary and so does the Planning Board. Can you explain if there's any value in having two different departments have GIS capability or GIS salaries?
Sure.
Yes, so we have two stipends for two different employees for GIS. One is the Planning Director, one is our System Analyst. They do different things in regard to the GIS. So we split the stipend years ago. There used to be one employee that had the $10,000 stipend, but it's more effective for us to split up the roles in order to provide better GIS service.
Okay. Anything else on this, on that one line item?
Peter Howen, Precinct One. So I just had a quick question. So it's our Town Administrator's final year, I believe, in his position. And obviously, I see his salary there. I guess I'm just wondering, going forward with hiring a new Town Administrator, what is the intent of the town as far as pay goes on that?
I believe the Select Board negotiates that contract with whomever they hire.
So I guess I'm wondering is, and I don't know when Sean's term is up or when he'll leave or anything like that, but I guess I'm wondering, my intent is going forward, we're not going to keep an experienced salary at a entry-level salary. I just kind of would like to hear on the selectman's point of view on this is what their, you know, we're very administrative-heavy financially in the town, and I'd like to find out how we can kind of cut back on that going forward. So
So my guess is that they are going to pay him a going rate for the position and that they're going to negotiate a salary, but I would let the Select Board
It is the intention of the Select Board to go out and advertise for this position. In the meantime, we've hired two individuals to be co-interim Town Administrators for a term of six months. I have, we have two proposals, one from Paradigm, the other one from the Collins Center, to do the search at 13,000 and 14,000. We are seeking a third proposal from David Kressman, our former Town Administrator, who said he would be helping assist the town in, in the process. We haven't received that proposal just yet. I do know that at this time, the pool of Town Administrators is not great. We will look for the best person we possibly can get, depending upon the price. Unfortunately, I can tell you this, the Town of Hopkinton, no comparison to the Town of Dartmouth in the way of monies and whatnot, just hired their Town Administrator at $260,000 a year. Good for them. We will do the best we can, negotiate the best we can. It is going out there, the prices are just, yeah, they're, they're up there. Whether or not we'll be able to secure at the, at the current rank, I highly doubt that. But we will do everything in our, in our five-person wisdom to get the best person available. The last two, Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Kressman have created an atmosphere in this town that has brought this town up. Mr. Kressman did a valuable and a very experienced position. Technical-wise, you couldn't beat, you couldn't beat them. Technical-wise, government-wise, you couldn't beat them. Technology-wise, bringing the town into the 21st, 22nd century, Mr. McGinnis was perfect, was spot-on. And I think we are, we are in a better position now to attract individuals to come to this town. This is the first year that we've hit 100, over $100 million in our budget. We are not a small little town in this area anymore. We are, we're a big player in this area. And I think this is, this position will be a very attractive one, and we should be able to attract some very good candidates.
Thank you. So let's go to our next hold, which is Facility and Vehicle Maintenance Town Hall and Other Buildings. Who called that hold, please? Did anyone call that hold? I'm going to move on. Oh, I'm sorry. Could you raise your hand when you've, when you're acknowledging me, just so I can see who's calling the hold, please?
Kathy Del Sordo, Precinct Five. Has there been a combination of plant management and, and individuals under one umbrella now so that it's been taken from other areas of the budget? Is that how this area has been designed?
So we're, we're looking at Facility and Vehicle Maintenance Town Hall and Other Buildings.
I didn't really understand the question.
Can you ask the question again?
Has there been a redesign in the operation of the plant area and the maintenance area of all of the town buildings so that it's under one umbrella with this, with this call?
The vehicle maintenance?
Plant.
Yes, Facilities has been consolidated and they, they had the staff work under the Parking Rec Director, Tim Lancaster.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, with regard to this hold?
Can you explain the custodial salaries? Because it looks like there's been a significant jump.
Yes, so those, as I just mentioned, the custodial staff has been centralized to work under the Park and Rec Director, Tim Lancaster. Previously, those salaries were in different departments, i.e. Library, Council on Aging. So we moved those salaries out of those departments and into this, the, into the custodial salaries, which is not on this line item, it's on another line item. Yes, it's here.
Okay. Anything else on that line item? Ready to move on to the next hold? I'm clearing that hold. The next hold is on Dartmouth Public Schools. Who called that hold, please? I'm sorry. Oh, I think I missed the police. Sorry. I did. Police Department. There was a hold on the Police Department. Who called that hold, please? Mrs. Miller?
We hear a lot of complaints about our Police Department, our P T, and our Department of Public Works, but I would like today to acknowledge them and say thank you very much for the hard work that you do in this town and for supporting us and protecting us.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Okay, anyone else on that one? Okay, Dartmouth Public Schools. Who called the hold? The gentleman right here called the hold on Dartmouth Public Schools.
Good morning. Nathan Silva, Precinct Six. First-time town meeting member, so thank you for having me. Just got three quick questions, then if you could circle back to me for a quick commentary, that would be perfect. So question number one, has it been an objective or a goal during the budgeting process that the budget would preserve essential town services and maintain existing service levels?
So you're talking about the entire town budget or are you talking about the School Department where the hold is?
Talking about the entire town budget. Has it been a goal and an objective that the budget would preserve essential town services and maintain existing service levels?
That's part of the budget memorandum that's approved by the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the School Committee prior to the start of the budget process in usually November, December.
Okay. Question number two, is it a financial policy in town that non-reoccurring revenues shall not be used to fund ongoing operating expenses?
Correct.
So question number three, was a 3% increase allocated to the School Department adequate to accomplish both of those requirements?
Yes, we believe it was, yes.
So we are not dipping into one-time revenues and we are maintaining existing service levels?
Yes. So the, the school is bridging a gap this year. We went through this last year where we were able to find some funding. So this happened last year as well, if you may recall, for a smaller amount. But this year, the school has been using their revenue accounts to bridge the gap between the 3% that the town has budgeted for and what their needs are to maintain those services.
And all the questions are going to go through me? Thank you.
So specifically, school choice fund is reoccurring revenues?
So is school choice fund a reoccurring revenue?
Yes. As long as the School Committee votes to use, to continue the school choice program, those are reoccurring revenues. They've received them annually for a number of years.
So that aside, the maintaining existing service levels, we're doing that by losing staff positions in the School Department?
So do you have a, so are we
Are we losing, are we maintaining existing service levels by losing staff positions? I think there's a net of nine and a half staff positions that are being lost this year with this budget.
So we're getting into cross-examination. I think if you have a point, I'd really love to hear you make it because I, we don't allow for cross-examination.
Okay, so my perception is that we are not only losing services in the School Department, but we're also maintain, we're, we're also dipping into one-time revenues, which I believe the school choice funds are one-time revenues, not reoccurring, ongoing revenues. I have a hard time understanding how it's possible that this budget has received unanimous support with hardly a mention of the problems inherent within it. And I'd like to tell a quick story, and I promise, Madam Moderator, I'll be brief.
As long as it's closely related.
It is, it's, it's completely related to priorities and, and the budget. So when I was seven years old, my parents moved to this town, at least in part for the School Department, right? When I got married, my wife and I bought our first home in New Bedford, but we knew we wanted to come back to Dartmouth before my kids were school-aged so that we could raise them in the Dartmouth Public School system. I didn't come to this town to drive on new roads or to walk on new sidewalks. I didn't even come for the libraries, for the public beaches, or even for the Police Department, as great as it is. And no offense, Chief, if you're here. And I don't say that to disparage those departments because I appreciate them and all that they do in service to this town. They're simply not the reason I'm here. The primary reason I am here is for the Dartmouth Public School systems, and I'm not alone in that. There are many people in this room and throughout this town that are here for the same reason, for the promise of the education that Dartmouth has historically provided to its children. Ask any realtor in town if the, the School Department is a selling point, right? There's nothing we spend money on in this town that can't be done in the future. The potholes that come up in the springtime, they're still going to be there when inflation tempers and things get back to normal. But the one thing that we can't spend money on in the future to make up for the shortcomings of today is the education of our children. My daughter will be entering the third grade this fall and she'll have one shot at it. Our kids will have one shot at their K through 12 education before they graduate into adulthood. We can't screw this up for them. Dartmouth is already among the least-funded school systems in the state. 270th out of 320, is that concerning to anyone else that a community as blessed as we are here in Dartmouth is funding its children among the least in the entire state? Now, I fear that we're on the verge of some major cuts. The fact that we are, are or may not be dipping into school choice funds to fund our ongoing operating expenses, coupled with the fact that we are losing positions in the School Department for the second year in a row, and this year, they're so significant, they can't be absorbed through attrition, right? So I remember when I was in elementary school, music was mandatory, right? You either joined the band, you joined the orchestra, or you sang in the chorus. I played the cello in the second grade and the instrument was bigger than I was. But the, the instructional elements were there at the elementary school level so that all kids had the opportunity to join, to, to learn an instrument of their choice and have a foundational education in music. Now, I don't know when that ended, but I fear that those are the kinds of cuts we're going to be on the verge of if we don't fix this soon. Okay? Now, given that we're among the least-funded school systems in the state, yet we've been able to produce the quality of education that we have so far, that speaks to the efficiency of the School Department, right? They produced a quality product despite the lack of resources that we've provided to them, which is why it's hard for me to understand that, the accusations that get lodged at them in some public meetings, in particular, the April 4th meeting of the Finance Committee, where they're accused of having all kinds of wiggle room hidden in the budget, the budget that requires us to have layoffs just to make it work. And I heard the backpedaling, but the fact of the matter is that was a written speech that someone put thought into before they read it into the public record. In that same meeting, there seemed to be a perception that perhaps the School Department would be immune from the effects of inflation. This budget will reach $60 million in short order, and there is nothing we can do to stop it, short of decimating the School Department because the costs keep going up. And most egregious in that meeting was a comparison that was made between our School Department and the School Department of 10 other communities in the state in terms of how we could better manage the budget through new fees imposed on our students. And I'd like to point out that those 10 communities, on average, spend $1,000 more per year per student than we do here in Dartmouth. A couple spend less, most spend significantly more, but on average, it's $1,000 more per year per student. So if we want to compare ourselves to other communities, let's first fund ourselves the way they do so at least we can compare apples to apples. Because if we gave our School Department $1,000 more per year per student, that'd be well over $3 million allocated to the budget, and all of the conversations we've had this past year, including the idea for new fees, would be unnecessary. Now, I get it. Another appealing thing about this town is a low tax rate. When I moved from New Bedford to Dartmouth, I could afford a better house and a better neighborhood, in part because the tax rate's so low. But I cannot in good conscience ask my children to bear the burden of the low tax rate that I enjoy. Let me bear that burden in terms of the quality of services that I receive from town, not my kids. Now, I'm not a big fan of high taxing and big government. That's not my thing. But if we as a community are not willing to bear the burden of the low tax rate that we all benefit from, how can we ask our kids to? Right? How can we ask our kids to? Now, I don't know what can be done today to fix this. I'm too new at this to know what the options are, but I will learn. But for now, my request is simple, that as we enter the next budgeting season, I ask everyone up there on that stage to keep this simple fact in mind as you prepare the budget that you'll present to this body next year. There is nothing we spend money on in this town that is more important than the School Department. Everything else can wait until inflation tempers and the economy goes back to normal. But every year that goes by, these budgets are critically important to our children because each year, they get a year older and a year closer to graduation, and that is time and opportunity that we can never get back. Now, if you'd indulge me for one more minute, I'd like to read a quick passage from the 1953 Town of Dartmouth Town Report. And let me just paint the picture for you, just to put it into, into the historical context. "The Greatest Generation Had Returned Home From the War Less Than a Decade Prior." "The year 1953 was the year of decision for the Dartmouth schools. The townspeople voted to build two new elementary schools and a new high school." This was all in one election, right? Potter, DeMello, and what is now the, the middle school, all completed within five years of each other. "Major simultaneous construction projects invested into the schools." "No one group can claim the credit for the new schools in Dartmouth. It was the citizens, citizens themselves, one by one, who went out and voted, and to them, the acclaim and congratulations. They know the kind of schools they want for their children." "The Greatest Generation Had Returned Home From the War Less Than a Decade Prior, and here they were yet again making another sacrifice, but this time, it was a financial sacrifice to provide for not only their children, but their grandchildren, their great-grandchildren, and their great-great-grandchildren have now all been, been the beneficiaries. And I can only hope that my generation will be the next to leave that kind of a lasting legacy here in this town. Thank you."
Thank you. Can we pass the microphone down here, please? They're going to turn it on, Mrs. Clark. You don't, yeah. I don't think you have to do anything. Go ahead, it's on now. Go ahead, it's on now.
Okay. Madam Moderator, Mary Lou Clark, Precinct 5. Is there a member of the school committee or a member of the Dartmouth Public Schools administration to respond to the speaker's questions about reduced positions and any other clarifications to his main points?
Sure. I'm not sure if we have our superintendent here or our business manager. Yep, they can come on down and participate, sure.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Jim Kylie, Assistant Superintendent, Dartmouth Public Schools.
So thank you, June Saban McGuire, Superintendent of the Dartmouth Public Schools, and I just want to say thank you so much for that support. And I have to say, I was a little bit emotional listening to you speak because that is the truth, your schools are the heart of your community.
So in terms of reductions, we reduced 11 positions this year, a net of nine and a half, as the speaker indicated. So we reduced a nurse position, two middle school teaching positions, an elementary teaching position, actually, three middle school teaching positions, a high school teacher, a elementary specialist teacher, health teacher position, secretary to the superintendent, and a middle school secretary position in our budget process because of our lack of funding. In terms of school choice funds, so our plan for FY '25, after the hopefully 3% increase that you have before you, will be to use $1.8 million of the school choice reserve fund to support our fiscal year '25 budget. So those, just so you understand, school choice revenue is approximately $680,000 to $700,000 a year, depending on the number of students that we have enrolled. That's the recurring amount. We are spending, you know, significantly more than that, at least $1.1 million in reserves for fiscal year '25 to sort of stay afloat. Those are one-time monies that we won't have available to us in the future, so.
Thank you. Anything else on this hold, or can I clear this hold? Mr. Tattlebaum?
I would just like to say that now, more than ever, this is a long-term planning strategy, of which our schools, in my view, certainly agreeing with the elegant words of the young fellow over there, that funding our schools going forward is the most important issue we have to face, but we also have hardcore capital expenditures to make. And as we go forward, the state is not interested in helping us because they said to us many times, tax your residents more because your taxes are too low. It's a crazy thing to hear, but that is the reality. So as you go forward in planning, we're going to do our best to try to put together a strategy that funds our schools as best as we can in our long-term issues so that we can keep our infrastructure going and be efficient. But I ask that you listen to us, be patient, get the facts, and vote based on those facts as we go forward. We're going to do our very best to supply you with all the information you need to make a conscious decision how we're going to fund these kinds of issues. Thank you.
Kathy Del Sordo, Precinct 5. I remember from last year's budget, didn't we have a very comprehensive overview of the school committee, the school budget? And I think if, going forward, the finances are getting smaller and tighter, a complete understanding of the budget would be most acceptable, I think, by the entire town committee here for votes. I would appreciate that.
Thank you for your comment.
Promise I won't be as lengthy, but I just want to point out that the overall town budget is increasing by about 3.97%. Is that about right?
Close to about 3.8%.
So 3.8%. There are about 21 groupings or line items, what you want to call, that their increases this year are in excess of the overall town budget increase. For example, MIS has increased about 25%. You know, there's a number, about 21 in total, but the school department is getting 2.78% by my calculations. So they're below what the town's overall budget is increasing by. And I think that speaks to priorities, and I appreciate Mr. Tattlebaum's comments there, but I think when we're talking about priorities for next year's budget, we've got to hold the school department on a higher pedestal than what we are doing right now. And that's all I've got to say. Our dollars are not speaking to the priority levels that we're saying the school department should hold in our community. And I think that's a problem that needs to be fixed.
Thank you. On the aisle here.
Margot Moore, Precinct 8. I just had a quick question. The crossing guards, did that come out of the school budget or the police budget? Because I've noticed they are gone, and that is just creating a horrendously, I saw a near miss the other day up near the middle school, somebody's going to get killed.
Mr. McGinnis, I think you can answer that for us?
Yeah, the traffic supervisors fall under the town municipal budget, and there were a number of issues related to turnover at that position and to hire at that position. We weren't able to do that. The chief worked with the school closely. I think the new system they have in place works actually much more efficiently. There's always issues that, you know, will arise with anything, but the pickups and drop offs have gone much more efficiently, surprisingly. I think they worked together to find a number of solutions that's worked out really well.
Thank you. Right there. Still on this hold, right, for the Dartmouth public schools? The gentleman right there? Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, Chris Fletcher, Precinct 5. Just a quick question. What's the projected student population of the town? Is that going up or down, or how is that progressing? We've heard about people getting a lot older, myself included. I've had my kids go through Dartmouth School System. It's been terrific experience, both done very well, but I just wondered how that projection's going for the town. Thank you.
So current enrollment is just under 3,400 students. We do project that that will have some decline. We have noticed following, we did a, had a study done looking at school, projected school-aged children recently, and it does have some decline. What I will, what I will share, though, is that what we found, unfortunately, and particularly as we came back from the pandemic, and over the last 10 years, the percentage of high need students in the Dartmouth Public Schools has increased from 29% to 42%. So we've had a significant increase of Dartmouth residents who fall into the high needs category. Now, high needs is low income, special needs, English language learner students. So it's becoming, while, yes, there was slight declines in enrollment, not major, the big issue is that there are kids with more needs than ever. So that's what we're observing.
Thank you. In the back row, please.
Hi, Margaret Sweet, Precinct 9. And I have a question, only because I don't fully understand school choice. So school choice, what I understand is that we take in students from around the area, and we get paid to take those students in. So what is the cost and what is the, you know, what's the income and what's the cost?
Sure. So school choice is a program that, I'm going to raise this up rather than me like hunched over. So school choice is a program that is operated by the state. It allows districts to decide whether or not they have capacity in their schools and are willing to, willing to offer seats to students from other communities. A lot of districts do participate statewide. The rate that the state sets for income is $5,000 per student plus any additional costs related to special needs for those students. So if students need some sort of therapy or additional help, the district is compensated above and beyond the $5,000. The way you get compensated is the state aid for the community that is the sending community, the students where, the community in which that student resides actually has money withheld from their state aid, and it comes to us. So we, we have chosen to operate school choice strictly at the high school level because we had what we thought was, you know, capacity. That's an annual decision, and it can be adjusted. So we have approximately 30 kids in each grade level at the high school, so a little over 120 kids right now in school choice. And if, the reason that it works for us is that, you know, we'd be looking at a class where you might have 18 kids in it. With school choice, you might have 21 kids. There's not a, as long as you're not focused on hiring additional staff to support the school choice program, then it's a sensible investment choice for us in that we have revenue available to support programs. We have historically used school choice funds to support technology in the district. That was our primary expense with, with school choice. And prior to the pandemic, that was critical. It led us to get close to one-to-one computing, so one computer to each student prior to the pandemic. During the pandemic, we, I don't know how we would have operated if we hadn't approached that with school choice funds, because we really wouldn't have been able to educate kids effectively during the time of remote learning and hybrid learning. So that's what it has been used for historically. It will not be what it's going to be used for moving forward. So it'll be still used for technology, but unfortunately, we have staff positions. We've never had any staff positions allocated to school choice funds previously, but we will now because we need to. So that's part of our plan for fiscal year '25.
Peter Allen, Precinct 1. So if I'm not mistaken, you said it's around $5,000 per pupil from the state for school choice. How does that compare to what a non-school choice pupil is costing, not costing? Education is super important, and I come from an entire family of educators who, I guess this kind of brings up another issue, with several young, master's level, particularly in special education licensed teachers, none of them will consider working in town because the pay, the benefits are so low for our teachers. So that's another concern for how do we bring young, motivated, recently educated educators into this town? But I guess if each student is, my question is, is each student is costing us, or we're bringing in 5,000, what is the cost of a normal pupil versus a school choice pupil?
Yeah, so, so per pupil cost for every student in the Dartmouth Public Schools, so including school choice kids, is $18,365. So the state, and there was, the speaker previously commented on where we place, and I think it's relevant, so the state average is $21,116 per student. We're at $18,365. We are 270th of 322 districts in the state, 13% below state average. If you, if you look at the communities that are close by us, all communities within a 25-mile radius, we're 25th out of 30. So that speaks to what, you know, what your comments regarding us being competitive. It's not really possible to be competitive from a salary perspective if you don't, if you're 25th out of 30 of the local, you know, communities. And unfortunately, that is something we face. Dartmouth's a great place to work, and that's a benefit. It is a great community, and that's a benefit. And that's how we staff, and we have a lot of folks who live in town and are working close to home. So that's a benefit, too. But in terms of being competitive salary-wise, we're not great. And benefit-wise, we have also had issues. I will say that the town has worked this year hard, very diligently, to try and create, you know, additional health insurance benefits that would, that would make us somewhat more competitive. So we're thankful to have that, but it's a challenge.
And I would just add just one point to that. One of, at least being here for almost a year now and hearing and spending time in our Dartmouth schools, we do have wonderful committed educators here. The one thing that I am hearing is that there are fewer people who are applying for open positions. And at that, at one time, there may have been 50 applicants for an open teaching position here, and now we're seeing that we're getting, if we're really fortunate, up to six applicants. So people are shopping, and I think that that is something that the town does need to pay attention to.
So are we ready to clear this hold? Okay. So on the main motion of the 2025, fiscal year 2025 budget appropriation that is before us, all in favor of? I'm sorry. Okay, could we have the finance committee recommendation? Let's back up. Do I have a motion a second on this? Move to a second. Fine, finance committee recommendation.
Finance recommends 700.
Thank you. And the select board?
Finance commu-
How about the select boards?
Been a long day, folks. Select board favors this 5-0.
Thank you very much. So all in favor of Article 13 that is in front of us, please indicate by raising your hand. Opposed, please indicate by raising your hand. Article 13 passes at 147. Thanks, everybody, for hanging in there. I appreciate that. I would entertain a motion to dissolve this meeting and a second. All in favor? Opposed? The meeting is dissolved at 147. Thank you.